All right, great. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the work session for September 17, 2024. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. The public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. All board members are in attendance this evening. We'll now move to recognition of guests and scheduled speakers. Dr. Zerbi.
Thank you, Madam President. The Methacton High School campus planning process is an important conversation for our entire school community. The process to date has included a review of our physical facilities, tours of state-of-the-art schools, feedback from stakeholder groups, including students, parents, staff, and community members, a report of recommendations from these stakeholders, public forums to gather feedback, a survey to gather feedback, all in the name of ensuring that we are prepared to make the best determination on the future investments in the Methacton High School campus. All along this process, we believe that is imperative that we develop a comprehensive campus plan that considers the educational, operational, and financial context to ensure that the future investments support the mission of the district and the vision of our high school and campus for the next 50 years. This evening, led by Dr. Regina, students, teachers, and administrators will share some educational context, the educational impact that this decision can have on the future of our school community. Dr. Regina?
Wonderful. Good evening, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to share the educational impact from the educational lens of those that will be presenting this evening, as Dr. Zerbi said, administrators, staff, and students. Tonight, I'll be sharing some of the background and the basis of how this presentation will be delivered and what the goals of the presenters are. The first two presenters you are going to see next are both Dr. Walsh, our Director of Curriculum, and our Director of People's Services, Dr. Graveney. They're going to be sharing specific items within their domains, what they mean, what the educational impact of those are, and how they're going to be embraced in the Methacton community. After our directors, our principal, high school principal, Dr. Uker, will join us to discuss items that have been shared in last month's presentation and share the feedback that we received from staff. And finally, our most important presenters of the evening will be our students, and they're going to be sharing with us the feedback on the impact of the possibilities for the student body. Everything the team shares with you this evening will be through the lens of a new construction. Our next two presenters will be discussing the positive impacts of the additions being discussed with the new building in their respective fields. When we move to the high school, we'll be shifting to feedback from staff with respect to some of those topics. Some of the items or changes or even reductions aren't always met with positive feedback, and we think it's important that the board hears both. In the next slides, we're going to briefly discuss some of the top educational activities and athletic recommendations from the committee in the information collection phase. And in the final two slides I'm going to present, I'll be reviewing the baseline program spaces that you looked at last month and how we've broken down each topic for the specific domains within curriculum and special education. The planning committees have defined their top recommendations for the new building project. We pulled from those particular items that related directly to education in an effort to ensure that our presentation matches the recommendations of the committees. Those recommendations are: build a state-of-the-art facility that will prepare our student body for their current interests and desired careers, inspire our faculty and staff, and engage our community; create a standalone athletic wing that contains pool, gyms, weight room, locker, team rooms, et cetera, that will allow for parking, accessibility, and visitor management and security; develop a STEAM center, science, technology, engineering, art, and math, for collaboration and engagement for all students, staff, and community on the first-floor location with natural sunlight; provide proper spaces for music programs, science program, life skills education, ELD programs, technology education programs, and FCS or family consumer science programs, along with the proper-sized spaces and locations within the building for offices and hallways that provide a high-level accessibility and movement; redesign, repurpose, build large group gathering areas, LGI cafeteria, auditorium, and library; continuing with 3-1, to increase available spaces to bring current outsourced programs back into the high school and provide opportunities for the development of new programs and supports for all students; culture, creating open spaces throughout the building with flexible seating options and in consideration of lunch and learn program; create innovative learning spaces to provide more opportunities for collaboration, engagement, and authentic learning; and finally, create an EDA-friendly educational environment that provides consideration beyond that of the current code to optimize access and learning for all students. So we pulled this initial list together of those educational items, and we tied it to the baseline program spaces that you looked at last month. Our effort was to pull from these two lists and to be able to talk about the educational items and the impact that they're going to make in a new building project. What we did was we broke them down into three specific categories. The first category being curriculum, and we're looking at small group spaces, large group spaces, an academic support commons, the fab lab or fabrication laboratory, and the lunch and learn concept. For special education, Dr. Graveney will be talking through the apartment program, the school store, and the sensory room. And for the high school, we'll be focusing on instructional planning centers, the science laboratory spaces, the performing arts theater and music, the eight-lane pool, the fieldhouse, and then finally, our student input. And with that being said, I'll be turning this over to Dr. Walsh to be talking about the curriculum items. Dr. Walsh?
Thank you, Dr. Regina. So this portion of the presentation will talk about some of the teaching and learning concepts. The first one is the small group spaces. The definition is it provides flexible learning spaces to allow for that small group instruction. And the educational benefit are opportunities for practice remediation and/or extension learning for those smaller group sizes. So what we envision is students working with teachers for extra support for concepts and skills that may need reinforcement or extension. We also envision students being provided with a space for those that may need extra time to complete an assignment. For the large group space, we define it as a large flexible learning spaces that allow for whole group as well as small group instruction. The educational benefits are opportunities for larger groups to meet and collaborate and work in various group sizes, oftentimes with multiple classes in that same space. And how we envision is students working in this space that will allow multiple classes to collaborate and to share ideas and resources with one another. Students can also utilize this space to allow for guest speakers, presentations, and shared opportunities to a larger audience, and that space, as was indicated earlier, can have up to 100 allocations for students and staff. I would then like to share about some of those academic support commons. It's that open area of the school that is dedicated to having those small group or even larger group discussions and presentations. The educational benefit will allow for collaborative conversations, group presentations, and flexible options for both small and large group instruction. And we envision students working in this open space that will allow for those smaller collaborative groups to complete tasks and to share those presentations and assignments with their peers. Also, we wanted to talk a little bit about the fab lab, the fabrication laboratory, if you will. A definition is it's a place where people can learn, create, and invent using those advanced technology tools. Small-scale workshops that provide access to those tools, materials, and skills to create using innovation and creative thinking skills. It offers access to a variety of tools, including printers, cutting tools, and milling tools to design and build. The educational benefit is innovative, hands-on, and problem-solving in a space to support STEM or STEAM and 21st century skills. So we envision this space as students working on these various tasks to design and build using their critical thinking and collaborative skills. Students will also use technology and digital fabrication to allow for that creation and invention. Students are then taking their creative ideas and then turning them to a prototype or even a product. That may include 3D printers, maker spaces, as well as advanced state-of-the-art notebooks and technology tools. And finally, lunch and learn. It's defined as a dynamic, innovative way to provide students and staff with time to address academic, social, emotional, and future preparedness through a school-wide common time found in the daily schedule. Time is set aside during the day to encourage a sense of community among the students and staff, and it gives students that opportunity to eat together as well as pursue other needs or interests. The benefit is the flexibility. It allows for students to reinforce those previously learned skills through intervention or extension time. Collaboration allows them to connect with their peers and to work with clubs and activities of their interest. It provides enhanced collaboration and maintaining a supportive atmosphere through mutual trust and accountability and providing the necessary structure and resources. So how we envision lunch and learn is students will have an opportunity to eat lunch, receive their academic support, access their teachers and counselors, socialize with friends, participate in study groups, an opportunity to make up missed work, and also take or even retake assessments. Students can manage their time by having choice and flexibility based on their needs and interests. It really gives them a voice and choice in that academic period. Students are also provided time to meet with their academic, social, and emotional needs during this common period. It also provides opportunities for students to make up any missed work for absences, and it provides that collaboration space as well. I'm now going to turn it over to Dr. Graveney, who will talk about the special education portion of tonight's presentation.
Good evening, everyone. So my first component I'd like to speak with you about tonight is the apartment program. So, sorry. An apartment program is an aspect of transition that focuses on a student's ability to live independently. The program is designed to give students with disabilities aged 18 to 22 the tools necessary to live in the real world. The program assists students with developing independent living skills in an apartment setting. This program allows us to use real-life activities that teach how to live independently and successfully. The program would simulate a fully furnished apartment setting with a kitchen, bedroom, computer, living room, and bathroom. So the purpose of this is to provide for us a continuum of supports for transitional services for our special education students. And transition services can be thought of as a bridge between school programs and the opportunities of adult life, including higher education or training, employment, independent living, and community participation. We envision an innovative educational program aimed at teaching life skills, independence, and responsibility in a real-world setting. We also envision students being given an opportunity to receive life skills, financial literacy, conflict resolution and communication skills, job skills, and real-life application of skills to their world. The second aspect is a school store. So we have a common definition. A school store is a business within the school setting that sells items to students, staff members, and parents. The inventory typically includes items like clothing, school supplies, backpacks, umbrellas, and other miscellaneous items. So the educational benefit is it's an opportunity for us to engage in school spirit, but more importantly, it's a transition opportunity for our special education students to learn, practice, and demonstrate vocational skills without having to leave our campus. Student skills would include maintaining a clean work environment, folding and sorting clothing by size, counting and inventorying items, and a school store allows students to practice financial management, marketing, and workplace etiquette right in their own school. We envision an opportunity for students to learn a variety of life skills in a real-world environment. We envision a program that not only provides an opportunity to bring our school community together, but to provide our special education students job skills and vocational opportunities. And we envision students will learn life skills related to budgeting, financial transactions, sales forecasting, entrepreneurship, marketing, interpersonal skills, collaboration, and problem solving. Lastly, I'd like to speak with you about sensory room. So a sensory room is an inclusive therapeutic space designed to support students' sensory, emotional, and mental well-being. It provides a space to help students self-regulate, de-escalate, and regain control. When we provide students the input from sensory activities and sensory rooms, this enables students to participate more fully throughout the day. So the educational benefit is that time in the sensory room is something that would help students with sensory processing disorders, autism, ADHD, or other conditions requiring sensory input regulation. It's also a place for students in need of emotional support, dealing with stress, anxiety, or emotional distress, offering a peaceful place to regroup. It also is a space used for counselors, mental health providers, and special education teachers to deliver small-group sessions to help learn coping strategies. Time in our sensory room has been found to prevent outbursts and also manage behaviors. They can also help students promote self-care, resilience, and recovery. We envision a space that provides a more immediate ability for students with sensory needs to get back to baseline and return to their regular or special education setting.
I have to raise it up a little bit. Good evening, Dr. Zerbi, members of the Methacton School Board of Directors and community members. My name is Dr. Deborah Uker, and I'm the Methacton High School principal. I appreciate the time I have to talk to you about the feedback we have received from the high school staff. Over the past several weeks, Dr. Zerbi and representatives from either the district or the architectural company have met with groups of teachers and students about the possibility of building a new school. Tonight, I will be sharing feedback with you about two ideas presented during these meetings: instructional planning centers and shared science labs. Instructional planning centers are large rooms shared by multiple teachers during their non-teaching times. Each teacher would have his or own cubicle rather than his or her own classroom. This is in stark contrast to how the high school is currently configured. With IPCs, the number of classrooms is reduced because teachers share the classrooms. Although the idea of IPCs does limit the total square footage of a new school, the high school faculty has some concerns. High school teachers take pride in their classroom environment. They display student work, personalize their classroom with their own style, and take time thinking about how their classroom should be set up. With a shared classroom approach, the classroom will no longer be an extension of an individual teacher. Currently, if a teacher wants to switch things up in between classes, he or she has that five minutes between classes to do so. Adding travel time to a teacher's schedule limits the in-between class preparation that high school teachers consistently utilize. The whole sense of establishing a positive classroom climate becomes significantly harder when teachers do not have their own classroom. Teaching requires routines and structure. However, teachers establish a wide range of routines and structures depending on their individual style. These expectations become more difficult when teachers share space with others, not to mention sharing classrooms limits the amount of storage of professional and personal items. Although having several teachers in a room at the same time may give them more opportunities to connect personally, IPCs lack the privacy needed for teachers to have private conversations with parents and/or students. Also, it's important to consider the individual style of teachers. Some professionals require quiet and solitude in order to focus on their work, while others function better in a more social situation. Requiring all teachers to utilize the IPCs eliminates their choice to close the door and get their work done. The next point of consideration for a new building is the reduction of the number of science labs. Similar to IPCs, Methacton High School Science Department struggled with this concept. They contest that maintaining the same amount of lab space was imperative for the successful functioning of their department. Currently, we have teachers who teach two or three different labs. Scheduling lab time for multiple classes seems difficult, to say the least. Also, labs can last over a period of several days. Sharing lab space means teachers have to be cleaned up and moved out regardless of the completion of the lab. Some lab classes require the use of certain chemicals that could prove to be dangerous in the hands of untrained individuals. Also, reducing the number of lab areas means every lab class would need to be equipped with the same materials. Lastly, when lab area belongs to no one, the desire to keep it immaculate and free from clutter lessens. It is now a communal spot, and people take less pride in the appearance and upkeep of shared areas. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mrs. Mary Fitzgerald, who will discuss some topics that occurred during the conversations regarding the performing arts, theater, and music areas.
Good evening. My name is Mary Fitzgerald, and I am the Director of the Methacton High School Theater Company. Thank you for providing me the opportunity to speak on behalf of music and the performing arts at the high school. I know I speak for our entire department when I say that we are excited about the possibilities and look forward to seeing these ideas take shape. To that end, I would like to briefly speak about a few opportunities and explain why they are so incredibly valuable to Methacton. To begin with, I would like to make sure I emphasize the importance of keeping our auditorium seating capacity at least where we are now. It would be a detriment to the program and our school as a whole to reduce seating, as many of our events are at or near capacity. This includes items not traditionally related to the music or performing arts department, such as Mr. Methacton and the Film Fest. One of the items that has been discussed is the creation of a black box dance studio. While we would certainly love having another space for additional performance opportunities, we understand that may not be feasible. Instead, we would like to suggest combining the choir room and dance studio. By lining the choir room with mirrors, we would create a multi-function room that both helps in the curriculum and education of our choir students, as well as continues to support our theater program and the very strong dance component of it, which we are incredibly proud of. This would also help with another aspect of the redesign, as during rehearsals and performances, the choir room would be able to serve as a green room, where students can wait for their entrances. The mirrors along the walls would allow students to check that all hair, makeup, and costume pieces look correct without having to run in and out of the dressing rooms. Speaking of which, we are also asking for full-function dressing rooms instead of a green room space. Ideally, these would be like locker rooms for athletics, but instead of showers and individual lockers, there would be a wall of changing cubicles, a row of brightly lit mirrors, and an area for students to hang their costumes, do their hair, and apply their makeup. The final item I would like to discuss is the creation of a scene shop as part of the new build. Currently, lumber and set build materials are tucked away backstage alongside costumes in a modular unit located near the football field or purchased new for each show. These materials take up so much of our backstage area, it cuts down on available space for our performers and limits where set pieces can be stored while waiting to be brought onstage during a production. Having a scene shop would clean out the backstage area and help make sure that there is always enough room for our students. In many instances, we would be able to build set pieces and keep them tucked away until necessary rehearsals, thus allowing the full stage to be accessible at any time for other needs. Marching band, as well as any current or future technical classes, would also be able to utilize this space, making it another great example of a cross-curricular opportunity. We are very fortunate to have a program that is continuing to grow year over year, and we want to make sure our students have the tools and facilities in place to help them thrive. We have seen firsthand the excitement the performing arts brings in our future high schoolers, whether it be through our annual K-8 theater boot camp, eighth-grade students getting to participate with the high school marching band, the annual band, chorus, and orchestra trip caroling through the district buildings, or even the huge turnout we just had for our auditions of a Christmas Carol. We want to ensure these future high school students have an auditorium and performing arts facility they can look forward to coming into, and we can't wait to welcome them into it. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Next, we'll be joined by Mr. Yoder, who will be going over the pool and bulkhead items. Mr. Yoder?
Good evening. My name is Ben Yoder. I've been a teacher here at Methacton for 20 years, and I was also the girls' swim coach for 14 of those 20 years. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk about something that will have a lasting impact in our community: the importance of building an ADA-compliant eight-lane pool with a bulkhead and sufficient spectator area for our aquatic programs. Excuse me. We have an opportunity to build a state-of-the-art swimming facility that can accommodate and grow our aquatic programs. We live in a community that values health, fitness, and education, whether it's high school swim classes, swim teams, or community education programs like lessons and aquatic clubs. An eight-lane pool with a bulkhead is not a luxury, it is a necessity. First, space and versatility are key. An eight-lane pool with a bulkhead provides flexibility use of the facility. With a movable bulkhead, we can divide the pool into separate sections for simultaneous activities. For example, while the high school swim team is training, they can have both girls and boys practices at the same time. This flexibility maximizes efficiency and pool time. It will also allow our youth aquatic club the flexibility to have multiple groups practice at the same time. It's like having two pools in one space. Second, it supports the growth of competitive programs. Our high school swim team will have the facilities they need to truly excel. An eight-lane pool allows us to host larger competitions, attract outside teams for fundraising opportunities, and provide our swimmers with the right environment to develop their skills. Hosting these events not only brings recognition to our program, but also allows visitors and businesses of the community creating a positive economic impact. Third, the increased capacity of an eight-lane pool with a bulkhead allows us to accommodate more people, schedule more sessions, and reduce wait lists. This is especially important for swim lessons, where there's often a high demand from parents and families. By expanding our capacity, we're giving more children and adults the opportunity to learn this essential life skill. Furthermore, an eight- life skill. Furthermore, an eight-lane pool with a bulkhead ensures that safety is never compromised. The additional space allows for better supervision, keeping swim teams, classes, and public swimmers safe while giving coaches and instructors the room they need to provide individualized attention. It also allows individuals with disabilities to take advantage of our aquatic programs. Finally, it's about creating a space for the community. An aquatic center with a modern pool becomes a hub for community engagement. Whether it's water aerobics for seniors, swim meets, rec swims, this pool will serve people of all ages. It promotes a healthy, active lifestyle and brings our community together in ways that go beyond the water. In conclusion, building an eight-lane pool with a bulkhead is an investment that benefits every aspect of our aquatic programs. We have the opportunity to build an amazing, long-lasting community pillar. Let's take this up important step and provide our community with a facility that meets today's needs and future demands. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Yoder. Next, we'll be joined by Ms. Taylor Parker, our Athletic Director, to talk about the fieldhouse. Taylor?
Hello. There are a lot of positives of why a fieldhouse would be a good idea. One, the locker rooms would be close for our teams to use. We would utilize them for away teams as well to be able to use. There would also be an indoor storage space for all of our teams, and this would include marching band, who right now has to trek their stuff down to the stadium. There would be additional bathrooms for spectators. There would be a dedicated space for wrestling room. There would also be indoor practice spaces for all of our teams, marching band, and color guard, and anyone else that would need an indoor space to avoid the weather. And there would also be a large press box for our home and away teams to use, so that way not everyone's crammed into an area. The coaches, we met with a couple of them and talked about some of the positives and negatives. The only really concerns that they had was making sure that the space was big enough, making sure that there was enough space, storage space, for all of the groups, for marching band, for football, for field hockey, for soccer, all of the groups that use the stadium, and making sure that the indoor space was large enough for a team to use. If it is too small, the team would not be able to use it, so making sure it is large enough for the entire team to use. And that is what I have about the fieldhouse.
Thank you, Taylor. On August 29, a group of about 40 students met with Dr. Zerby and a team of architects to go over the concept of the new school. Lila Godfreyd and Maren Wells were two of the students who were able to hear the presentation and volunteered to come tonight to share some of their thoughts.
Good evening. My name is Lila Godfreyd, and I'm here to share thoughts about what you heard regarding the new school from a high school perspective. I'm going to talk to you about how the internal features associated with the new school. Number one, the classrooms. When I heard about the classrooms in the new school, I was thrilled to find out that all the classrooms would be the same size. Currently, at the high school, our rooms come in various sizes. Some rooms are so small, and students can feel very uncomfortable. Over 20 teenagers cramming into a small classroom creates anxiety in some students. A new school would provide all students with the personal space they need to feel comfortable and at ease. Number two, the modern heating and air conditioning systems. A new school will bring with it a quiet central air and heating system. This is very exciting, because right now, depending on the classroom, students have to put up with the steady, loud humming sound of a unit wall. In some rooms, it's almost impossible to hear the teacher if you're sitting next to that wall. Also, in some rooms, we have to bundle up in sweatshirts because it's so cold, yet in other rooms, it feels like 90 degrees. We come to school dressed in layers, so we are prepared for whichever room we're in. Being in a classroom where the temperature is stable and quiet sounds amazing. Number three, academic common areas. The new school offers many common areas outside the classrooms where students can learn collaboratively. Doing group projects requires space and room to engage in academic discussions. Right now, some teachers allow us to work in the hallways, or if we are in the west wing, we can sometimes use the library. But the convenience of having a large work areas right outside the classroom would be very close by a classroom, or very close by, sounds great, like, sounds like great learning opportunities for students. Number four, new school ideas. We heard there may be new school store and/or new scheduling ideas, such as lunch and learn. As a high school student, these new ideas really motivate me. I wish we had a school store where students could buy spirit wear, such as sweatshirts, shorts, shirts, et cetera. These things really add to student pride. And if our school had more room and a different design, we could have things like lunch and learn. Having an hour during the day to participate in activities that interest students or meet with teachers in classes where they need help seems like another great opportunity for students. Everything we heard about the inside of a newly constructed school sounded absolutely amazing. From a student perspective, a new school has the ability to enhance our education and increase student motivation, pride, and excitement for Mathacton.
Hello. My name is Maren Wells, and I'm here to speak about some of the ideas we heard about regarding the outside features of a new school. Number one, fieldhouse. During the presentation, we heard about the new school having a fieldhouse outside the stadium. This is such a good idea because sports teams can store their equipment there, and locker rooms would be available for all sports. It seems like it would be a long walk from the new school to the fields, so the fieldhouse would be much more convenient for student athletes. Number two, new weight room and indoor track. Currently, we do not have an indoor track. Having this would give more options to students during physical education classes. During the winter, students will be able to run and train on an indoor track. Also, a new weight room would benefit all students, not just athletes. Our current weight room is small, and there's not a lot of equipment. It's most used by athletes during their season, but a new weight room would benefit everyone, even staff members. Number three, a new pool area. I was excited to hear the construction plans offer a new eight-lane pool with a large area for spectators. Having a larger pool allows swimmers at different levels to practice in the pool at the same time. Mathacton could also host meets with more teams. Having a larger area for spectators would allow more families and friends to come support our swimmers. Number four, outdoor courtyard. An outdoor courtyard offers students an opportunity to learn in a different environment, nature. Students and teachers can benefit from outdoor learning. First, natural sunlight and fresh air are healthy options for students and staff. A change in environment prevents boredom. Being outside puts people in a more positive mood, and learning comes more easily when you're in a good mood. Number five, new traffic flow. If anyone drives to the Mathacton High School campus between 7:10 and 7:35, you know the traffic is pretty intense. The plans for a new building offer a way to minimize the traffic and alleviate the congestion of cars, buses, and students entering the school at the same time. The presentation given to us by Dr. Zerby and the architects was very motivating to the student body. As students, we are walking out of the meeting, there's a buzz of excitement. Although most of us will not be students in the new building, we are still thrilled to hear about all the opportunities the future Mathacton students may have with a new building.
Thank you, Maren and Lila. The high school team is grateful to Dr. Zerby and the School Board of Directors for involving them in this process. They appreciate the time Dr. Zerby invested in meeting with multiple groups to elicit feedback regarding the construction of a new school. A new high school is not merely a structure of brick and mortar. It's a beacon of hope, opportunity, and growth for our students. It embodies our commitment to preparing them for a future that is both promising and unknown. Our dedicated staff, fueled by a passion for education and a solid commitment to Mathacton, are the heart and soul of this vision. They inspire and teach with an excitement that transforms classrooms into arenas of innovation and discovery. With a new high school, we empower them with the tools and environment necessary to continue igniting curiosity and nurturing talent. We should look beyond today and plan for tomorrow. I started in this district in 1998, and the world was a completely different place. Likewise, the world of our students, the world our students will enter in 50 years will be vastly different from now. A new high school ensures we are not just keeping up with the current trends, but setting the stage for future advancements. It provides a platform to integrate cutting-edge technology and forward-thinking curricula that will prepare our students for the careers and challenges of tomorrow. Moreover, a new school creates an abundance of opportunities: more specialized programs, expanded extracurricular activities, and state-of-the-art facility that fosters creativity and collaboration. It's an investment in our students' potential, giving them the chance to explore their passions and develop skills that will serve them throughout their lives. A new high school is more than a building. It's the foundation upon which you will build a community's future. Let's continue the legacy of excellence and innovation that defines Mathacton in a building that is equally as impressive. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. We appreciate all your hard work and dedication to the Mathacton School District. Thank you.
Are there any questions from the board? Ms. Alston?
Thank you very much. That was a great presentation, and I appreciate all the different stakeholders being involved with that. I do have a couple of questions that I was writing notes down as you were going. One is about the apartment program. So currently, that whole program is, is that at the IU? Or do we have any of that, those components here?
It's at the IU, that's correct.
It's at the IU. Okay, so are students there at the IU all day, or are they bused there for part of the day?
Yep, they're bused there. And it could be an all-day or part of the day, depending on the program that they're in.
Okay, thank you. And then, also, my question was about the lunch and learn, and just a comment that I really like the idea of that, because right now, I know that if students want to stay after for any clubs, or even academic help from a teacher, they have to be able to get a ride home. And for working parents, that's not always feasible. So I really love the idea of being able to do that during the day. And when we were talking about the school store, it just brought to mind two things. One is that we also saw a really cool coffee cart program at another school. And I also know that sometimes, some of the life skill students have helped with the backpack program and packing items and inventory management of those items. So that would be also maybe something great to integrate there. And just in terms of the instructional planning centers, I was wondering, it was very clear, but I was just wondering if teachers gave any feedback on a desire for more collaborative spaces. I guess that would just be something else to consider, like a hybrid or something like that. And regarding the fieldhouse, I was wondering if, I like the idea of the locker rooms being close to the stadium for use. I was wondering if other schools in the area have also that indoor practice space, or if that would be something new to the area, if we did that. And then I'm wondering if, I don't know, if there's some way that maybe the gym, the existing gyms could still be used for indoor space. I don't know, I'm just thinking out loud here. Anyway, so that was pretty much my feedback. So, thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Ms. Perdue?
So I do want to say thank you to all the stakeholders, the teachers, the students, the staff. I think it was nicely done presentation, very clear. I have some questions, but I do want to say, in reference to the IPC centers, I think one of the schools that we toured, I thought it was a great idea. I naturally feel maybe it's not a good fit for every department, but I think going back to Ms. Alston's point, just to make sure, I think it may be good to get feedback on whether there's another opportunity for collaboration. And I bring that up because I know teachers have called me specifically from the high school, where at times, they have to try to find a place just to make a phone call to a parent where they have privacy. I thought those places were maybe ideal for those type of opportunities. I don't think it'll work for every department, but I do understand where the teachers are coming from, but I think maybe we can look into more opportunities there. And I did have one about the fieldhouse. I have some other ones, but mainly about the fieldhouse, I think what I kept hearing was about ensuring we have enough space for all the teams. And so I do want to make that clear, because I would hate for us to put something in where it's only being used, or it can only be used by certain teams and not all teams. So I did want to just add that on to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perdue.
Thank you all for your help.
Ms. Theo?
Hi, good evening. Thank you again for such a thorough presentation. I do have just a few questions about vision and thoughts. The first one was the FabLab. I'm wondering what the vision is for which teachers would use it, who would have access, like, which students? I just wanted to know a little bit more about the vision of moving in between, in there.
That's a good question, and there's really two paths for a FabLab. There's certainly integrating that in the current curriculum that you have, and there's also standalone courses in FabLab in which you're communicating with other districts, sometimes not even in our own state, or maybe even in our own country, and you're able to share. I think there's 1,800 FabLabs in the world, and so the opportunity to have standalone courses is there as well. But we would want to explore both of those opportunities with our FabLab.
Thank you for that. That's very interesting. I learned something more there. Thinking through other questions, oh, I did have a question about the sensory room, and this is just for my own information, honestly. Would there be a difference in the type of sensory room built for a high school versus like the one in Skyview due to age and maturity, or would they be similar in just access? Sorry.
We would certainly make sure everything was age-appropriate that was within there, but what we've been doing is leaning on our occupational therapists to really be the one to not only determine what kinds of things should be in there, but what should that setup look like, just to make sure it's all appropriate.
Thank you. I was more thinking, like, when people picture what it would be, like, that makes sense. Thank you. I want to thank the presentation, the suggestion for the coral room and the, like, yeah, the dance studio adding the mirrors. That's a fantastic suggestion. And I also did want to ask a quick question just about the pool and just thoughts of use, and this is, if it's not there, I just was wondering if there's anything extra that has to be done to be a USA-sanctioned meet. Does anything extra need to be thought of, just to hold those extra fundraisers, for those kids trying to get the times?
It would be, make sure that there's 25 yards, make sure that the depth, oh, sorry. You know, make sure it's 25 yards, and then make sure the depth is appropriate to dive from each end of the pool.
So that's it? I didn't know if there anything else needed to happen on the backend. That's awesome.
For USA qualification times, they do have to have a USA official. That's the only other thing that I can think of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's it.
Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Cleary?
Thank you. So I'm gonna piggyback off some of the stuff that Ms. Alston asked, because I had some additional questions on top of what she already asked, but she asked most of mine. With the apartment program, that going, that currently, those students currently go to the IU, we pay for that, we pay the IU for that service, right? So if we did the apartment program here at Mathacton, we would, in theory, save the money that we're expending. Is there, okay, that's what I thought. Is there an opportunity to potentially have, if we had this apartment program, to have other schools who may, local schools who may be using the IU services potentially use ours as additional source of income? Is that, is that even something that's in the realm of possibilities?
Whether you'd want to do that or not would be a question. Can you do it? The answer is yes, but then it would be a question of whether you'd want to.
Yeah, that's for you guys to decide. Okay, thank you. In terms of the instructional planning centers, again, the teachers, I hear what you're, I hear the feedback that you've given. My only thought or question is, I'm assuming that when we spoke to the teachers about this sort of change idea, we presented it, but did we bring anybody in who has lived it in another school district to tell them what it is like in terms of?
to tell them what it is like in terms of, so that they could ask questions and get information? I'm not, I'm not trying to sway the teachers, I'm just wondering if we did that.
No, and we didn't. We just gave them an article and a real flat line definition of what it was. So knowing the staff for the past five months, you have very hardworking Methacton High School teachers. So if that was a possibility, I know that with more digging and more investigating and more research done into that, we could illustrate the benefits of a collaborative center. But none of that, this was just a conversation. This was the first conversation that they've had about maybe not having your own classroom. And of course, that's going to come with some resistance.
Yeah, any ideas of change are always for everybody. Yeah, I was just, we're wondering if you thought that might further, that might, not further, I'm not trying to change people's minds, but continue the discussion. Just, I always think that hearing from folks who are living something that we're asking you to consider changing might, might be helpful.
Right, and touring other schools and seeing it in action would be beneficial as well.
That's a great idea. Thank you. And then lastly, the fieldhouse. So for me, the fieldhouse, when it was introduced on the concept designs, was a new, is a new concept. I'm not really familiar. I mean, I understand when we talk about what a fieldhouse is, but it might be helpful to see if any districts around have one, to actually go see one, because I can really definitely appreciate the feedback about, you know, it being available for everybody. But when I hear you say things like, it needs to be big enough for indoor practices and for locker rooms and for, it just sounds immense. And so I'd be curious to see some, some real fieldhouses out there. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mersky?
So what, just to clarify, what's currently planned or in the plans we've looked at for the indoor space for the fieldhouse? So everyone's clear? Because my recollection is that it's not really a very big space.
That's my understanding as well. The dimensions are limited in your ability to probably practice with larger teams.
Right, it's mostly storage and bathrooms and the press room, right?
Probably limited for small, small teams and small organizations.
Like indoor practice field area, you know, it's not that type of fieldhouse.
Correct.
The recommended adjustment would be 3,000 square feet for the indoor turf.
Okay.
Which?
Okay. Thanks. Back to the more general question about bringing, the opportunity to bring programs we're currently sending out or outside the school. What programs specifically have we looked at or do we think are possible to bring in? Aside from the apartment? Have we, have we gotten that far? I mean, it was mentioned of potentially bringing other programs in or even creating new programs. So how far has that been fished out?
Sure, I mean, we've certainly looked into different transitional services that we've currently outsourced, whether it's through the MCIU and other programs, any way that we can bring those transitional services into our school district. It certainly would save dollars financially and also provide the opportunity of students here without traveling back and forth to the IU.
But I guess that's what I'm curious is like, how far have we looked at that? Have we really identified what programs with this plan we can bring in? Or was it too, we haven't, it's too early to have done that?
We're not in the stage of having that discussion. Most of what you're, what you're hearing here this evening, you know, stemmed from initial conversations with Methacton High School campus planning.
Feedback from the community. Okay, thanks. On the IPCs, I would also encourage further education and discussion. The same would go for the laboratory spaces. From the schools that I've, we've reviewed, I see there's a lot of opportunity or a lot of potential there, let's put it that way. But it certainly is a different way of teaching in a different environment, so. The only other comment was the, the one around the theater? Like the size, right, the space? I mean, one of the arguments I heard, arguments, explanations I've heard when we were on the tour was the concept of creating a more small theater, like a more intimate presentation environment for productions, particularly for productions, and basically just scheduling more, you know, more frequent or not, increasing the number of the presentations and not, and not trying to have 800 seat, I don't know what, you know, large.
Yeah, if I could just comment on that, I think in the discussion, Ms. Perdrol, you can comment if I'm not accurate in my recollection. But we were, we were all in agreement that having the existing, I'll call it auditorium or the proposed auditorium have seating for, I believe, 475 students and then that, then a balcony where there would be room for an additional 200 would, would be consistent with what would make sense for having that, an opportunity for that more intimate setting where you wouldn't use the balcony and then give an opportunity for us to leverage the balcony for when we have for flexible performances. And one thing that you didn't hear from our original presentation on the fieldhouse was there was a conversation about cheerleading and wrestling, sharing the wrestling room. Well, it was up to, and not only, I learned a lot from speaking with the teachers about all these concepts, but I learned that you can't have the two sports using the same space that are in the same season. So the good news about all that is that it makes a whole lot of sense to leverage the balcony where we have, not only for the auditorium opportunities, but for large group instruction as well as for after school to house the cheer team. So you can retract the bleachers, roll out the mats, and you can do that, those types of activities there. So as Dr. Regina had mentioned, you know, many of the concepts that we're talking about and many of the ideas is trying to leverage the spaces. I thought it was a genius recommendation from the theater group about leveraging the coral room for, a green room for a dance studio. You just saved, you know, almost 2,000 square feet by just a simple recommendation. And so I thought that was pretty impressive. But that's consistent with the types of things that we're trying to do within these spaces. And, and so with the auditorium, it, I think our, our base program is consistent with what you're seeing and hearing from those other schools that we visited, where the gymnasium was the larger space that allowed everybody to kind of fit the student body into.
No, thank you. I think, I think that covered one of the points that I wanted to bring up that weren't touched on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mersky. Any other questions? Ms. Kangrow?
Thank you. I want to say thank you to all of you for coming and speaking. I think what's important right now is for us to understand that our next step is to really decide whether we're going to vote for approval for the architects to design a new building. And to hear the perspective through an educational lens is truly what we were looking for to understand, should we go down this venture and make this decision? And I went on all the, I went on all the high school tours and I did see the, at State College, they did have a separate fieldhouse. I did see that. We didn't get to go into it, but we did see that because the idea was that we were taking space due to our limited space. We were moving the fieldhouse to an area that we can absorb that one gym and bring it over here. So that was kind of nice to see. But I, what I saw more than anything was opportunities that other students had and how can we enhance our educational programming that is excellent now, but what we can give opportunity for students for tomorrow? I totally agree. To hear the students say that they can't hear, you know, and they're cold and hot, but the small differences of different classes and just the small group, large group, the new open concepts of giving activities and athletics like during the day, everyone's using all the resources that we have. It's not just limited to the sports using the health, you know, the health gym. So I do really appreciate hearing from all of you. I think that's really, this is the why behind us. So I thank you for bringing that to us, so. And the student speakers, you're very well spoken, so I'd like to see that always. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kangrow. Any other questions from the board? Ms. Austin?
I think I may have asked this, but what is our existing seating at the high school in the auditorium?
630, I'm being told, and I believe that is correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. And just, do we know what it is here, just for a visual reference? Yeah. All the way back, okay, 1,200 all the way back. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Thiel?
Sorry, I just, I wanted to share just a comment again just because it's come up multiple times from different comments. I have significant experience teaching in an IPC-like setting. And I just want to share because I don't, I'm just sharing information rather than being one side or another. I will share some benefits first. Some benefits that I experienced is seeing other teachers. It gets me out of the classroom and I get to see how other teachers are using and working with their students and gives me ideas to try. That being said, I absolutely want to share that the concerns of the impact on setup, when teachers put their own stamp on a classroom, it's, it is their personality. A lot of thought goes into it. But it's not just a teacher's personality. It's also thought on where students will perform best given the material that is there and the information they have on the students. And sometimes that looks different for the same material, but different students. Depending on the classes that, to which they are assigned in the classrooms, there may be different types of seating, which absolutely impacts the feel and the flow of the lesson. The other issue that definitely has some merit is materials and setups, not just in, for science labs, but also for any lesson that you might need something more than a laptop that will follow you. And even then, when traveling between classes, there's powering down the computer or closing it, moving it and turning back on. So there are minutes lost, no matter how good you get with it. So planning can absolutely reduce that and the setup and structure, but I just wanted to share some of that information. There's, there is tons of collaboration, but these concerns or forward-thinking things of what would change are absolutely true.
Thank you, Ms. Thiel. Any follow-up questions from the board? Ms. Graff?
Okay, it's not working. I have that. So I do want to say I really appreciate all of the teachers coming together, the students coming together. I think the input is really fantastic. And I hope that moving forward, we can all realize that in this process, if we decide to build a new high school, and that's a big if, we all are going to have to make compromises. I really appreciate the idea that people are coming to the conversations with, how do we minimize certain spaces or how can we optimize certain spaces so that we can minimize the cost? Because cost is going to be a decision maker for us to move forward. And I think, I just want to sort of, one of the questions that came to mind for me as we were talking to teachers and putting out there the idea of the planning center approach, were the teachers aware that there's a cost savings to go to that type of approach? It makes the building physically smaller, which of course saves us cost. Is that something that they were made aware of? Oh, so they were? Same would be the same situation with sharing labs, right? Because if we can share labs, the district can have fewer science labs and we can have fewer scientific instruments and equipment. We don't have to duplicate it. Do we have an idea how, how many days a week are labs are currently in use in the building?
We could get that for you. The master schedule is probably more complicated than me saying the exact percentage right now.
You know, if we have 20 science labs out of five days a week, are they 60% of the time utilized? Are they 100% of the time utilized?
Well, a lot of our labs are in our classrooms, so it's.
But if they're doing a lab or are they in the classroom learning, right? Because doing a lab means you would be using the lab. And I just think it's the kind of thing where colleges across the country use this setup, right? Labs are shared. High schools across the country are setting it up this way because it's cost-effective and it allows teachers to collaborate and it reduces the amount of chemicals that we have in the building. There's a lot of positives around it. I understand there's scheduling issues and I understand there's also other concerns. But I think that, you know, to Ms. Cleary's point, I think that the planning center approach, the shared lab approach, these are things the teachers are going to have to be able to see firsthand to be able to see if it could work. And I think it's really going to be important for us to have teachers come in and talk who've been through the transition of, I had my own lab, I had my own storage room, and now I share it and here's why it's beneficial and here's what the problems are. So that we can really come to a compromise that everyone can be happy with and know what they're getting into. I mean, I certainly don't want to push teachers one way or the other, but I also think that we need to have an open mind, you know? With the auditorium space, I guess my question, I did hear the comment and I appreciate the comment that there are some events that we want to be able to have larger groups. Do we ever use this space here for those events? And with the additional space here, it seems to me like there's not a need for a much larger space than what we have. And maybe even we could go to the smaller, more intimate setting with this as an option where you have a Mr. Methacton, where you want to be able to accommodate a larger group. It's a one-night event. You can't just add an extra night onto the show. So like coming here to do something like that makes sense to me. It doesn't make sense to take a show performance and bring it over here. So I get that, but I also think like, one of the things we've heard is that a lot of other districts have extended programming. They do four nights instead of two. And I just want to put that out there as an option that maybe we should think about. You know, the auditorium is one of those spaces that doesn't get used very often out of the days of school. And if you look at the whole year, we want to make sure we can maximize the usage of it. And how do we do that? I love the idea of the balconies being large group instruction spaces. I think that makes a ton of sense. I like the idea of using some of our green room and, and multifunctional spaces. I hear the set design issue because I think that's a big one. Having the ability to build sets and have them accessible is, is huge and safe, right? We want to have a space where our kids can be working safely, not, you know, too many people in one small space where it gets a little crowded and is not safe for them to be working. So I hear that. But the other thing I just wanted to say, you know, on the small and large group instruction, we currently have one LGI and we have six small group instructions in the high school. Is that sufficient?
Which, the six small group instructions? I'm just trying to understand.
It's on your side.
The, is that the proposal?
No, it was on the current status sign. I thought it was current.
Yeah, my understanding was that was for the, the new one.
So that's your baseline is going to have six?
Yes.
So how many do we have currently?
Right now, we have our classroom spaces that we're utilizing. These would be something a little different. If you think of like, I'm going to use the elementary version of that, but if you think of Arrowhead and you think of those middle rooms in the inside, those small group spaces that students can be pulled out from the large group spaces and use the small groups, it's something similar to that concept. And then if you think of the end of the hallway as the extended version, I can't remember exactly what we called it here. Thank you, the common areas. It's, that would be also the same idea. So thinking of that structure, it's obviously much a smaller structure, but it'd be that same concept.
Yeah, and I mean, I hear the students saying how nice it would be to have collaboration spaces. So I have seen the commons in many schools now and it's a great concept, but it's not always convenient to the location of the classrooms for some of the teachers, right? You can't have all the classrooms circulating around the commons. But for those that are close to the commons, I feel like there's an option to use the commons for those kinds of spaces. But for classes that are separated, you would need additional pull-out space for that.
That's fair, like the upper Marion model, I remember seeing that same thing in upper Marion.
And if you were down at the end of the hallway, remember you had to be on those stairs, those really cool stairs that Mr. Winters doesn't like. So the other thing I just wanted to add is that like, as we move forward through this process, I think that there is an advantage to letting people have awareness of how their choices impact cost. I think, I just want to make sure that people are cognizant. The pool is a great example. I mean, I would be curious to know how many pools in our area have an eight-lane pool with a bulkhead, right? That's, that's a fairly significant cost in this project. And, you know, is that, is that what everyone is doing or is it, is it? that what everyone is doing, or is it, is it forward-looking as the future planning? And I think we have to consider those things as, where do we want to spend our money for future planning? Can we take, give some to athletics, can we give some to the arts programs, can we make sure our science labs have some future programming, and then, you know, do it in a cohesive way?
That's fair. Thank you, Ms. Graff.
But thank you all for coming to present tonight, that was really great.
Thank you. Are there any further, Mr. Winters?
Geez. I'll be really, really, really quick. I definitely appreciate all, everybody coming out, and the feedback, and the presentation, and the time spent. So the first one is on lunch and learn. I feel like maybe if you're from the outside listening, you may not, there was a little context that might be missing. I, I think one of the important points is that it's two, it's an hour, so we need to be able to feed at lunchtime half the school and staff at that time, and the other half would take the other half hour. How many lunches do we have today?
We have three.
We have three lunches? Okay. So it provides that flexibility for kids to, to take those activities, maybe do an instrument, you know, whatever, work on, uh, set design, whatever, it provides that flexibility inside the time period of the school, where you may not be able to participate if you're on the soccer team or the field hockey team or whatever, right?
Absolutely, yep.
So I, if you're watching, I think that, to understand why, and, and because of that requirement, it is a large space, right? So it has a large cost associated with it. So it's, it's defined as a community space, correct? That is attached to the, uh, the athletics, or butts against the athletics, and is sort of the center point of the, of the, of the school, is that...
It is, I mean, the lunch and learn concept is, can look different in different buildings and different school districts, but essentially, exactly what you said is correct. There's a large amount of time that exists, and within that timeframe, you have the flexibility of either eating lunch, you, going to activities, using extended opportunities to learn. Today, I was with the esports group, they could be focusing on esports, which was fantastic, by the way, there was like 40 kids trying out, and it was absolutely awesome, but that's a different story for a different day. But there's just so many other opportunities that can exist with that lunch and learn time, that we just don't have built into the schedule now, so...
And, and I believe that space is also could be used for some of these additional large breakout sessions and so forth. It's, it's a very flexible space, but I just wanted to bring that down real quick. In sensory room, do we have one today, in the high school, or something like?
We do not.
Not in the high school at all?
Not in the high school.
All right. Okay. And then, the, the Instruction Planning Center, so certainly a hot topic. Definitely learned something, the travel time is definitely something that I haven't thought about, you know, so that, that was like, oh my goodness, yes. From a perspective of, we have Dr. Uker, I believe, six, six minutes between classes today, five, five minutes between classes today, and now, we're, we're requesting maybe, I don't know if they're going to be going all over in the principle of having flexible classrooms, but they would be moving, they would always, they would be nomads along the way as well. So that's something that's sort of obvious, but not really, not sometimes, not, for me at least. The other thing that popped in with, related to, um, not having, going immediately to this, is there's been concerns, there are lots of concerns, of course, about different things related, but in the feedback, is some concern about the size of the school, and the capacity, because of being smaller than the existing high school, and being built for, I think it was 1650 or something like that, I don't remember the exact number, but something around there. That sort of provides you some flexibility, if you have to, down the road, and maybe that's where education is going, is that, that moving around from classroom to classroom isn't maybe necessarily standard. We saw some of the schools build, build for this, but they, they planned for it, but because they have the capacity, they haven't implemented it, right? So maybe that's where we fit in a little bit, in that, at that aspect as well. So, the rest of the questions, the other eight, ask for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winters. Ms. Graff.
Let's see if I can get my microphone to work. So my one question that came to mind early on was, how does the concepts and some of these ideas that the teachers and the administration are putting forward, how does that address the potential teacher shortage, which we see coming in education? And, and are we thinking about ways to address that as we move down this path?
Certainly programmatically we are. There are a number of things that we do within the structure of our own program, things that we have done naturally with the CBA, that we're focusing on, not just teacher recruitment, but teacher retention. We do that with a lot of our learning programs, our leadership programs, so I think programmatically we do that really well. Certainly the opportunities to exist in a state-of-the-art complex. I was a physics teacher, if you told me that I was going to walk into a school district with a fabrication lab, you have me. Like, that's state-of-the-art technology that you're sharing, that I'm not going to get anywhere else. And so I think, all the opportunities that you're talking about here, whether it's small group instruction or lunch and learn, this is, these are progressive thinking ideas that teachers love hearing about and administrators love hearing about, and they want to be a part of programs like that. So, yeah, I think this would be an absolute recruitment tool for us, the school district.
Great, thank you.
Yep. Pooja, Ms. Janda.
I've been waiting.
Patiently.
First, I have one comment about the fab lab. Conceptually, I had a really hard time understanding what that was. Through other things that I'm doing, I found a place in Norris Town called Flux Space. If you've heard of it, tell me, and I'll stop talking about it. No.
Keep going, because not everybody did.
Basically, this guy that used to be a teacher collaborated with someone that owns a furniture company, and took this warehouse, and basically built this huge space that is a, I think a fab lab, and they have, uh, all the local districts come and use it for free. So I would highly suggest that Methacton set up a field trip for the teachers, or whoever's interested, to go check it out. It's a very, very cool space. My question is, have we gotten feedback from groups such as the SEA about their input on the Life Skills Department?
The feedback group, yeah, they were part of that. The committees that we received feedback from, SEA was, was a part of that, yes. We're struggling on the word of that, but committee was probably the best word that we can say, but yes, they were part of that feedback, I apologize.
It's okay. I, I was, I was just curious about what their insight was on that. A follow-up to that is, is there more of an educational focus for students with special needs, um, that's not solely focused on living? Do you know what I'm saying? I feel like the Lifestyle Department is a lot of practical things, which is very important, but I'm missing the academic side of it, I guess.
So, when we talk about transition, we're talking about life after high school, so typically, it's for students aged 18 to 22, and they've completed their academics, and they're working on this particular area. It's also part of a student's IEP, that we have a robust transition program for them. Some students are able to achieve this, you know, through X, Y, or Z, some students need more. And so it's having specific goals in the areas of independent living, to be able to achieve that for them. So that's why you weren't, you weren't hearing things about classes within this, it's more, the academics have already been taken care of, and we're focused on this. So when a student turns 14, transition becomes part of their IEP, and so we're looking at kind of that bridge forward.
And I also just want to thank everyone for coming today and presenting, it was very well done.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your time and giving us the opportunity to present to you this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Regina, and thank you for members that presented here this evening, students, well done, and thank you for your courage to get before the school board sometime. This is a, you know, a, a, a good life lesson, and getting, and speaking your mind, so we would, we appreciate that. So, so for this evening, members of the board, I, I, I share with you that there will be a lot more discussions, uh, associated with the educational, physical, and financial aspect associated with this, you know, future decision of ours. We do appreciate all of the input, and certainly, there's more to be had. So we will continue those discussions. Dr. Regina, thank you so much.
Thank you.
For this evening, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi.
And if, if I may, I can just welcome anyone who has other commitments this evening, who wants to be able to kind of step out, they're welcome to do that now, before we move on to the next presentation, the Audubon Elementary School.
Good afternoon, have a good evening, everybody.
Thank you so much, folks. So this evening, we, we have Dr. Sergini, our Assistant Superintendent, presenting what was shared this month in the Property Committee meeting, as well as in the Finance Committee meeting of the board. It was, it was recommended by both of the committees to bring forward the presentation for the full board's consideration, potential discussion this evening. So with that said, Dr. Sergini, members of the board, you have a copy of the presentation before you, we'll see it on the screen as well, it's all yours.
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi, and good evening. It has been several years now since Audubon Elementary School was last utilized as a school. Since then, the district has explored multiple options for addressing the future of the building and the property. This evening, the administration is seeking input from the board, and, and a determination about how to move forward with the Audubon Elementary School property. The Audubon Elementary School property is located in the Lower Providence Township section of Methacton School District. The parcel, including the building and grounds, excuse me, totals just over 14 acres in size, and the building itself totals just over 55,300 square feet. The zoning for the property is R2, which is residential, with a public facilities overlay, PFO, allowing for an educational institution. This aerial view of the building shows that there are multiple distinct areas of the building, including the original structure, and also additional classroom wings that were added at later dates. There are multiple inherent challenges associated with the Audubon property, which has, again, not been used as an educational institution, or for educational purposes, for many years now. The district incurs an annual operating cost of $57,000 to maintain the property, including upkeep of the grounds. For a time since the closure of the building, the facility was utilized by the district for storage, but that is no longer the case. While we continue to maintain the exterior grounds, there are no plans for any maintenance or upkeep of the actual structure. The building itself has become what would be called a, an attractive nuisance, with an average of three to four break-ins a month occurring at the property, and that requires a full response from both district personnel and law enforcement. In its current state, the building and property provide very little value to the community. By way of a timeline, a previous board voted in November of 2022 to approve demolition of the building. In keeping with that vote, the district undertook an asbestos abatement project that was completed in May of 2023, and also obtained a National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, commonly referred to as an NPDES permit, which is required to demolish the building. As per Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection and Montgomery County Conservation District requirements, the area of disturbance is required to then be restored to a meadow, natural vegetation, vegetation environment. As has been discussed several times over the past five years, one option for the district is to keep the property and look to reuse it. Options associated with keeping the property include the following. A future use as a school location, which as a new build would cost an estimated $50 to $70 million. It should also be noted that based on enrollment projections, the, the district has no current plans or any need for this building in the next 10 years. Another option would be to utilize the property for athletic facilities, requiring an investment of approximately $5 to $7 million. This option has also proven not to be reasonable, as an investment on the Arcola Skyview property would be more viable, and would also eliminate any need to transport students to the Audubon property, which would not have a school. There has been discussion about utilization of the property as a district bus terminal, which it should be noted is not a permitted principal use in the R2 PFO zoning district. Additionally, from a functional standpoint, this property is located at the extreme end of the school district, and would necessitate additional costs of approximately $300,000 to $400,000 annually, in additional bus routing costs. This option would also face significant obstacles associated with traffic in the surrounding area, especially on Egypt Road, and the difficulties associated with buses making a left-hand turn to exit the property and onto that road. Other opportunities that were explored include use as a community park, or as an indoor or outdoor learning center. Both of these options, like the athletic option, would involve additional costs to the district, as well as annual upkeep, which could possibly be mitigated by exploring grant funding, but would certainly require additional spending by the district. Finally, options have been explored associated with allowing the use of the property by the Lower Providence Township, including as a fire department substation, or as a community center. But as yet, neither of these options have proven viable. As has also been discussed over the past five years, another option is to sell the property. There are multiple possibilities associated with selling the property, the first three of which would require a majority vote by the board to move forward. Those include sale by public auction, sale upon receipt of sealed bids, and a private sale. Additional possibilities for selling the property would require a two-thirds majority vote by the board to move forward. These include sale to a charitable organization, sale or donation to a township within the district boundaries, or a volunteer fire company or ambulance service, and finally, a sale or donation to a historical society or community college. District administration is seeking direction from the board regarding how to move forward with the property. If the board determines to keep the property, in its current state, this will incur an ongoing annual financial commitment of approximately $57,000 for maintenance. Conversations have been held regarding the possibility of keeping the property and converting the structure into a new administration building. Cost estimates for this option are approximately $6.4 million, which it is worth noting is $750,000 more than the option to include a new administrative office as a component of the proposed high school project. The district has already spent $218,000 on preparing the building for demolition, with an additional $538,000 of cost required for demolition. That being said, if the board determines to keep the property, the question is, should the property be kept and the building demolished, or is there a preferred use for it? If the board determines to sell the property, does it want to sell the property with the building as-is, or spend the additional estimated $538,000 to demolish the building? All associated expenses will lessen the overall net return, including the estimated 4.5% closing cost on the sale. It is further projected that if the property is sold and used for the by-right purpose of residential development, the district will receive an esti, estimated $95,000 of annual reoccurring tax revenue. With the information provided, again, the administration is asking if the board has enough information to make a recommendation for the Audubon property. If the board determines to keep the property, what would be the recommended plan for future use, and should the building be demolished to achieve that planned future use? Or, if the board determines to sell the property, should the building be demolished before selling it, or should it be left? And with that, is there a preferred method of selling the property to direct the administration? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sergini. So, members of the Property Committee and the Finance Committee, we've, we debated this in, in committee this month, and certainly, there are some members of our, our board that, you know, haven't been in that discussion for maybe quite some time. So, if, if anybody wants to proceed with opening the floor for discussion, we should do it now, Ms. Cleary?
I'm really happy to see this on the agenda, I just want to say. I missed the property meeting, as you know, last week, but had made known to folks that, that I... I missed the property meeting, as you know, last week, but had made known to folks that I was hoping to see this on the agenda, so I am. You know, the property was closed. I think the Board voted, a prior Board voted to close this school in 2017. So, is that correct, '16? Even longer. So it's really, it's been, it's been a long time. So I don't need any further information to make a decision, but I would really encourage the Board to, by fellow Board members, to give this some thought, for us to make a decision next week. And I would, I would personally like to see a motion on the agenda next week that gives the administration authority to sell Audubon Elementary School as it is, in its as-is state, in a private sale. I think, I think for one, not only how long it's been since, you know, since we moved to close the school, two, as you said, the enrollment projections, as we know them now, over the next 10 years, we don't need another school. It's frankly ugly, it's unused, it's an eyesore, it's giving us problems with, you know, the nuisance factor. We've looked into uses, you know, possible education uses, and none of them have done anything, you know, for us where we wanted to move forward. And I just think it's time for us to take some action on this. Thanks.
Ms. Perdue?
Just have a question on Slide number four, where you talked about the challenges. And based on the January 2024 permit, can you clarify what the requirement, what it means to be returned to meadow, just for those in the public, just, I think that's important. And I think you indicated how much that will cost, but maybe just give us a little bit of information on that.
Certainly. Any area of disturbance would have to be returned to meadow, and that's a natural vegetative state. So if we were to, the permit allows for the demolition of the building, and also the conversion or removal of the majority of the parking areas, keeping only the small parking area in the front of the building and some area back near the former bus loop. So any area where the building is currently occupying that space, or the parking lots that would be removed, would have to be returned to a natural vegetative state. So meadow is generally naturally occurring grasses and native vegetation, so not like your typical manicured and mowed lawn, but more like it's something that is only mowed and maintained on an average of maybe twice a year.
Dr. Sergini, and just to take that a little further, is there, is there an impact based on our decision when something's returned to meadow for a potential future use, if we decide to keep the property and return it to meadow?
Yes, there is. The more naturally vegetative area on a property, the more stormwater management that has to be created by township code. So if we had, the actual area of disturbance is estimated to be well over five acres. Again, that's inclusive of the building, the parking areas, and actually a portion of the current grass area that is also included in that calculation. So if that property would then be redeveloped, the stormwater requirements for rebuilding would be that much more, because there is perceived to be more area where you have to manage that stormwater. So that would be at a significantly higher cost were we to redevelop it after demolishing the building.
Ms. Perdue?
So you indicated we're currently spending about $57,000 to, for upkeep. Is that current, or is that previous to us removing items? And I do want to be clear, because before we, I think when the decision was made about demo, there was pretty clear instructions to remove anything from that building, because I think the last time we toured it was being used as storage. And the decision was that everything will be cleared out of that building. We haven't been there in a while, but I'm hoping, whatever decision we're making, we now having returned to the point where there's pileup of things in there. So I'm asking, just because, one, my first question, how much are we spending on upkeep now, currently, or maybe whatever estimate you have? And if we were to do anything where we return to meadow and keep it, what is the cost in upkeep also? I just want all the information to be clear, so everyone is transparent on the cost, no matter which way we go.
Certainly. The current number is the approximately $57,000 a year. That includes things like electricity, sewer, alarm monitoring, and mowing. If we were to demolish the building and return those five-plus acres to meadow, the cost would be significantly less, because the standard upkeep on meadow is not a weekly or even biweekly mow, it is normally about twice annually. So it would be significantly less.
And we don't know that cost, right?
So, Ms. Perdue, just for reference, the former cost, if you look back in history of these presentations, our annual upkeep was in the $200,000 range, roughly, prior to removing all of the materials and moving forward with the abatement process.
And I forgot my other part, but we don't have any items in there now, right?
We are no longer utilizing it for mass storage, no.
Is the building completely clear, or?
There are a handful of items left, but by and large, those have been removed.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Ms. Gankrow?
Thank you. I just want to share my opinion on the matter. I've been working with this subject for the seven years, and I do think, I've, we've, I've sat through many presentations that we discuss prior options. I do think at this time, I don't think we should be investing in this area. I think if we're going to do any investments for, like, our Cola, and looking at their fields there, you know, instead of doing the fields at this, this property, that was one discussion. I just think overall, I just don't want to invest in anything that's not an educational use, and I just don't see that being the case anymore. I think, so for me, I do agree with Ms. Cleary. I would like to do a motion for private sale, leaving the building as-is, with discussion if it comes up on a private sale.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions to that, Ms. Steele?
Thanks, Ms. It's just a question that I have about the options for selling the property, and it's just like procedural, honestly. Honestly, I understand, like, the sale of public auction, sale upon receipt, and all that stuff, but is it, talk me through, is it possible a charitable organization could approach us for a private sale, and then does it switch to a two-thirds majority? Like, does that make sense? Like, is there, how do the bottom ones play into, other than the donation, obviously, that would take a different turn? But does that, is my question clear?
It is. And yes, if it were to be a private sale to an entity that is listed as that, it would require the two-thirds majority vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Alston?
Hello, thank you. Yeah, my concern just always has been about putting this up for sale and then having a brick-and-mortar charter school buy it. So if there are ways that we know of to mitigate that risk to the district, I would be interested in hearing about those.
Thank you.
So there have been discussions about how we could mitigate that risk. There is, there's nothing you can do in terms of deed restrictions, there's nothing you can do in terms of contractual or in the sale agreement to limit that, that issue. I think, I think generally speaking, one of the things that, you know, could give us a good indication, if we were doing this through, for example, a private sale process, we were going to the XYZ Home Builders, and forgive me, I don't know if there's actual company called that, I'm just making a fictitious company up. When you do a private sale like that, likely it would be contingent upon their ability to get a permitted use from a township to build X number of units and all that kind of stuff. Sometimes that takes, could take maybe six months, a year, to get all those approvals. And once they get those approvals, then the sale would kind of go through. So you would be more or less sitting on the property, knowing that when those approvals are received, and before the sale, you know, is actually finalized, you can at least have some reasonableness, not a guarantee, but some reasonableness, that, you know, they're likely to use that for a development of homes, rather than development of a school. That's about the best we can do in terms of guarantee. The only other guarantee I can give you to prevent that is to hold on to the property. Ms. Alston?
Just sort of as a follow-up to that, so the zoning there, which is residential with the educational overlay, right?
Yes.
So is that, does that zoning, if it would be bought by a residential developer, then would the zoning just stand? So then, so that zoning is always going to be that zoning for that spot in perpetuity?
Correct. Yes, and it's R2 PFO, so it's a single-family detached dwelling with certain ancillary structures that are approved, like, things like in-law suite, sheds, pools, those types of structures. And then the permitted uses under PFO include specifically elementary schools, township buildings, emergency services buildings, library, government offices, a community center specifically for senior citizens, open space, or municipal parks. So it's very limited in its usage.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Alston, I, just to clarify, I may have said permitted use, but actually the land development part of that. So they will have the ability to put certain units on there, but how many units? What do they think the stormwater management will be of that? So it's actually getting the approvals from the township that they'll, it'll be contingent upon, not necessarily its permitted use. I don't know if that?
Right, now I understand what you're saying. Thank you.
I just wanted to be clear on that. Any other comments or questions for the discussion to my left? Ms. Chandra?
Does the district have a recommendation on what to do with Audubon?
We've provided previous recommendations, and the recommendation that we were last moving down was to have the building demolished, and then a future determination of the, of the property to be determined. Once we got into the NPDS permit issue in terms of having to return it to meadow, it was clear that the return to meadow, we believe, limits our ability for the best future use of that property, meaning it would raise the cost associated with, you know, creating a school on that property. Not that it can't be done, but it would increase the stormwater management requirements, as Dr. Sergini had mentioned. So with that, I believe it was discussion probably in the Property Committee where we said, let's take a step back and let's reevaluate where we are. Certainly, as superintendent of schools, it's very difficult for me to recommend getting rid of any property here in the district, knowing that there's a potential use for that property somewhere in our future. But certainly, there's been a long span of time, a lot of conversations, and a lot of resources that have been put to bear to get us to this point. So what I believe ought to be done, and what's logical, may not necessarily be in the same boat. So at this time, it is certainly a difficult decision, but it's not one that the administration believes is an ultimate answer that I can provide you, like, this is what we ought to do. Because I should keep the, I can't tell you to sell the building, but logically, there might not be a better choice. Any comments for people, oh, another, another comment down the left?
Yes, another comment. I was just wondering, I know we were talking about getting an updated enrollment study and projection, and I just was wondering, do we think that there's any possibility that that's going to change anything we're talking about here?
I, it's hard for me to say. I know that there are some additional developments. When you were seeing some of the financial discussion about the high school project, you've seen a number of developments. So I think the Board should know that I did reach out to Flow Analytics. We should have their agreement on the, on the agenda for your consideration next week. So we are working towards providing you an updated enrollment study, which might play into your determination. Any other questions to my left? Okay. To my right? Mr. Mersky?
So I've heard a couple of different explanations on the permit, just a clarification, because you're, the wording in the presentation says, requiring impervious surface, impervious surface to be returned to meadow, and your description is disturbed, you know, areas I guess, and you mentioned in the permit that we submitted, there was an assumption of a percentage of the pavement that would be also removed. So that would be my question, what, is that a requirement of the permit? So in other words, if the definition is only what's disturbed, and you tear down the building and fill it in and plant grass, do you have to remove the remaining pavement, or a portion of the pavement? Or can you leave the pavement there?
You could determine to leave portions of the pavement, pavement there.
Okay.
So, but the permit does allow for removal of that.
Right, right. Can you clarify or expand upon what the closing cost estimates, what comprises the four and a half percent?
I can provide that information to you. I don't have the list in front of me, I apologize.
I'd be interested. And how confident are we on the demolition cost? There's an estimate of additional $538,000. Is that plus or minus? I know the appraisal, the most recent appraisal we had done had a lower number.
We are fairly confident in that number.
Okay, I think that covered my questions. I too am in favor of selling the property as-is.
Thank you. Any other comments, Mr. Winters?
Yeah, real quick, 100% agree with those that are recommending to vote next week, as suggested. I voted in 2022 to go down this path, I would have voted earlier to go down this path. But there's two quick questions. One that gives me a little bit more, we have flexibility, you know, or a future Board, 15, 20 years down the road, if there is a need for another elementary school in that region, we have flexibility with our borders among schools, and then also, I believe the property, at some point, Woodland, there is room in the back end of Woodland as well in the same area where that growth would be taking place. So I know Dr. Zerbi says he can't predict what's 15, 20 years ago, but reasonably expect that we have alternatives if that ever came into place. So I can sleep well voting to sell the building at that point. And just for clarification, we are giving, if we would give the, approve on Tuesday to go sell the property in private sale, and the bids or the offers that come in, it's just like selling your house. You can just say, they're too low, I'm not going to sell, right? It's, there is, it's the exact same circumstance, right?
Yeah, there will be no obligation for you, even, even in, even in some of the first two, even if you do bids and all that kind of stuff, you're not obligated to sell. In fact, you would have to vote on the final sale of the property in a public meeting. Any other comments on Audubon Elementary School? Seeing that there were a number of comments related to putting the matter on the agenda for consideration of sale, I'll work with the Board President and Vice President to determine the language for, for the agenda for next week. With that said, are there any other final questions? Ms. Perdue?
I was just looking on here, and I mean, as you indicated, we'll work on the language, because I, and I'm thinking about the way the work session agenda is written, it's just on here as Audubon Elementary School discussion. And I do want, maybe it's clear that you'll be putting an agenda or a matter on the agenda for a vote for next week. I think that should be clear, so people know, so it won't be like, we had a discussion and then it's on there, because I don't think that's written up in here as a matter that we'll be voting on. Because I don't think that's written up in here as a matter that we'll be voting on.
There is no agenda item or even sample of an agenda item on this work session agenda. So I think, Ms. Perdue, maybe the point you're getting at is, would the board want to provide enough notice to the public that a vote of such magnitude is on the horizon, not necessarily just by the notification via agenda, which would go live at about 7 o'clock on Saturday evening? So I don't know if you want to have any discussion about that, if that's a concern to you. Certainly, we can do a number of things to make sure that both, you know, our parents, our social media, all that type of stuff can be issued in terms of notification. But another option is that, you know, if you so choose to, you could go through another cycle in October of being on the agenda, a work session, and then a voting meeting. But that's totally up to the board at this point in time. I just want to make sure you're comfortable with this. Ms. Austin?
I was, sorry, I was just going to say, I'm not asking to delay, I'm just asking to ensure that the community have proper notification. And if you have an avenue to do that, that's fine. But I do want to say that I don't think anyone that picked this up or looking at this work session was under, I think we already made a decision two years ago. The school has been sitting for years now, and I mean, at the end of the day, it's a cost to us without any education value. What I'm asking to ensure that we do have the proper communication that going forward, this will be something that we're voting on. Again, I guess you can say that we are going forward to with selling the property. That was just my point, but I'll let Ms. Austin speak.
Yeah, I think, I think that's what I was trying to get from members of the board. Do, you know, just putting it on the agenda to go live at 7 o'clock on Saturday for a vote on Tuesday, is that notice enough? And that's what, I thought that's the concern that I think Ms. Perdue might have had. Ms. Austin?
Yes, I just wanted to speak in support of Ms. Perdue's point that I do, because I believe that the last, the last thing the public heard is that we were going to demolish it. And I remember, you know, every, people went through it, people remembered, and so we're changing course here, and I do think that the public is just a little heads up about that.
Is there one else? Yeah, Ms. Graff?
Yeah, so one, to answer your question, I think the agenda is sufficient notice. I think that's fine. This has been an ongoing issue for a long time. It's been in the property meetings for months. So I don't know that we need additional notification. If other board members feel like we do, we can certainly push it to October, and I'm fine with that, too. I feel like a number of board members are leaning towards the sell. I just want to also clarify that my recommendation would be if we sell, we definitely sell as is, and do not do any additional remediation work, demolition work, anything like that, because it's just a cost to the district that we will never recover back in the sale price. So I just want to make that clear. Our cost to demo the building will be higher than what someone buying the building will pay to demo the building. So we will not get that back in the sale price. And I think we need to be very clear about, when I look at the options, there's really keep it, demo it, don't demo it, and then sell it. And that's it. There's really just three, because there's no sense in us demoing it and then selling it. It just doesn't make, it's not cost effective for the district. And I just want to make sure the board is aware of that. But as far as notification, I think putting it on the agenda is sufficient, but if other board members feel differently, I think we can entertain that and push it to October.
No, I'm, sorry, I actually wasn't saying to push it to October. I was just saying to give community notice now. That's all I was saying.
It did reject, I agree. Like, could we send out something just like newsletter from the superintendent, like, and keep it on the, put it on the agenda for next week?
We certainly can do that. I just want to make sure that everyone's comfortable with the path that we're going down. And with that, I can have something probably in the communication to the public no later than afternoon on Thursday. And we can do maybe, maybe two notices and hit also the weekend as well, along with the agenda being posted. So if everyone's comfortable with that, and there's no objections to that, we can certainly do a one pager, kind of summarizing everything, changing, letting people know that we're changing, or that there's a potential of changing direction, and that there's a vote on the potential private sale of the facility for consideration at the Tuesday's meeting. Ms. Cleary?
I think I would ask that we not put a lot of commentary in that. I mean, we've had the sort of the discussion here, like, I think we just need to give them, people notice that it's going to be on the agenda, a decision, rather than rehashing, because we've said it all here. Yeah.
Does anybody, we're not voting on this, but does anybody have any objection to Ms. Cleary's recommendation? And then, then that's what we'll proceed with. So by Thursday, we'll have something sent out with notice. Thank you very much for the discussion. Thank you, Dr. Sergini. Well done. Next on the agenda is for guests on schedule speakers, the facilities plan for financing. You have a copy of this presentation at your seat. Please know that this was discussed at the finance committee meeting of the board. This is for general obligation bonds. It's entitled Resolution 2404. And please know that this is a process that certainly started in September. We talked about the potential need for borrowing of property, meaning based on the projects that were being discussed about where we ought to be landing with some of the master facilities plan work. Mr. Kenwood presented a couple other potential projects outside of the master facilities plan. And then in finance, we had public financial management or financial advisors, you know, giving us a recommendation on how to proceed forward with some of the borrowing, whether it's borrowing for a potential new high school determination or for some of the master plan matters. So in terms of the rest of the process, we would come back, meaning on September 24th, with the approval of the resolution as it exists right now on the agenda. And then we would come back on October 29th with a final approval. So what I mean by that is, the approval next week, if you approve the resolution, is actually to let the financing team know what it is that we want them to proceed preparing for consideration of a vote on the 29th. It takes time to put all the materials together, to contact the Department of Economic, Community Economic Development, and certainly the actual initiation of the borrowing would take place on October 29th. So your vote on the 24th doesn't necessarily mean we are borrowing, it means we're giving permission to the team to move forward with preparing the information. And then if it was approved on the 29th, we would have some estimated settlement date prior to December 31st. If we look on the next slide under purpose, we see that the financing is needed for the following, and this is pretty straightforward, the continuation of comprehensive high school planning process. Can you advance the slide for me, please? Thank you so much. The process, and we do address the projects outlined in master facilities plan. So please know that the, if we decide in October that we want to proceed forward with the next steps of the high school planning process, that would mean we would move into schematic design and design development. With both of those, there will be costs associated with that, and it could be in nearing about $1 million and maybe a little bit more with that respect. And I'll have those exact numbers for you by next week. But the most important part of understanding that is, you know, if we are proceeding with that, using some of the funds associated with this borrowing, as well as preparing us for the next step of that process will be helpful, in addition to trying to knock off some of the smaller master plan projects prior to a potential larger high school construction is probably going to be, you know, an important aspect of what we're working on. And please know that as part of the property committee meeting, we did talk with our owners' rep, CHA, to look at our existing master's facilities plan and move items so that we can best leverage not only this funding, but leverage future funding in terms of the stuff we need to do with high school, as well as we need to do with the other buildings. In terms of the impact, on the next slide, we know that there are two things happening almost simultaneously here. If you remember, the board several months ago approved a resolution for refinancing of approximately $10 million in existing debt. That refinancing would lower existing debt payments. Right now, that resolution, or the minimum threshold, was supposed to be a savings of $175,000. Right now, as of today, in speaking with PFM, they're telling us that we're closer to $200,000 with savings. And then the second part of the impact is that by borrowing the new money to $15 million to address the capital needs, it would keep our annual debt payment at approximately $9 million, where it is today. And if we flip to the next slide, you can see the excerpt of how that borrowing might play out. And again, this is just an illustrative representation, but if we borrow $15 million for a 30-year term, you can see that in column three listed here, we're currently at about $9 million in existing local effort. With the borrowing of the $15 million, you would see that in column five, our local effort would change to those numbers. So it will not have an impact on the budget moving forward. Are there any questions with respects to the general obligation bonds and the borrowing of $15 million? Ms. Graff?
Yeah, so this presentation is really confusing to me, and maybe I just am not really clear on what we're doing. I am concerned that we're talking about borrowing $15 million to do a series of projects that are on slide three. And when I look at slide three and I look at the list of projects, there's a number of projects on here that are not going to happen, at least not going to happen in '24, '25. Some of these projects have already been in the budget and approved or in process, so there's no borrowing needed to complete those projects. I'm, and so I'm a little confused as to whether this $15 million borrowing is for existing facilities projects or for the next step in the high school process. So I just like, I would like clarification on that.
Yeah, I think it's actually for both.
So then, if it's for the next, the next step of the high school project, what will the money be spent on?
So if we, so the funds would need to be spent, or 85% of the funds would need to be spent in a three-year period of time. And the concept around, you know, where we're going with the high school project allows us to keep our existing, it does a number of things. It gives, it frees up the opportunity for us to address some of the master plan projects if we want to move them forward in the timeline. And that's yet to be seen, because we're still working on the addressing the movement of those projects. But the concept is, we don't want to be borrowing and/or managing projects in the master plan at the same time, potentially constructing a new high school. So the idea would be to move some of those projects forward. I know that Mr. Kenwood had brought a couple other things that aren't actually in the plan forward in a brief discussion at the last property committee meeting. But I think even more importantly, it allows us to keep our run rate in terms of our borrowing capacity at the, in addition to allows us to finance any additional expenses for moving forward with the high school campus planning process.
So I'm just going to urge the district, before we borrow money, I want to know exactly what we're spending the money on. And this presentation does not tell me that. So when I was in the property committee meeting this month, and in finance, we talked about borrowing so that we could start the borrowing process, because we know we're going to have to spend money at the high school, whether it's existing high school with renovations or an HVAC system, or a new high school, or something in between, we know we're going to have to spend the money, and we could start borrowing now in order to be able to get the borrowing started so that it is, doesn't have such a significant impact on taxpayers next year and the year after. So you borrow in smaller increments over a longer period of time. That makes a lot of sense to me. However, if we're going to do that, I need to see what we're going to spend the money on. And I'm looking at this list of facilities projects, and I know there's projects on here that are not going to move forward. So this isn't sufficient. And in terms of the high school project, you know, my question is, how much is the cost for engineering? If we move to the engineering step in October and approve that, what does that cost over the next two to three years? Because that could be the $15 million we're talking about. But I don't know right now. This information has not been presented to me yet. So I am very concerned that I don't have enough information to be able to make a decision to move this forward.
I appreciate your feedback. Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from members of the board to my right? Ms. Cleary?
I'm just going to echo what Ms. Graff said, because I, I'm going to tell you that while you were speaking, I was, like, really wasn't sure what this was. And I mean, I understand the concept, but Ms. Graff is correct. I mean, we've had discussions in property where I know some of these things aren't going to be moving forward. And so when I start to do, you know, I'm not, when I start to just look at the raw math, I just don't see it. So I want to echo what Ms. Graff said in terms of, if you want us to approve a $15 million borrow, we need to be able to evaluate what that's, what that's for. And I, I don't feel like we have enough, I don't feel like I have any information to make a decision at this point. So I would ask for more. I don't know what to tell you that is, other than really specific what we're, what we're talking about. I'm super uncomfortable.
Yeah, and I, and please know that I completely understand what you're saying. I don't have any issue with that. There's a timing issue here with the conversation. And what I mean by that is, you know, what we're asking the board to do is to tell the financing team to prepare something for October 29th. In the meantime, we're also in the process of readjusting the master facilities plan to also be available for your consideration at the same time. So the approval on the 24th, as an example, does not necessarily mean that you're borrowing any money whatsoever. We're telling the financing team that we intend to consider borrowing on the 29th. And the other challenge associated with all of this is that in doing it before the end of the calendar year typically allows us for us to find, you know, the better rate associated with this. So I certainly can, you know, get more information, have that available for the board. But in terms of the actual borrowing process, the timeline is designed to, you know, meet certain deadlines, and it might be out of sync at this point in time, meaning the missing of the information that you would commonly need. But I can see and regroup and see if I can somehow better inform you and the rest of the board on the matters. So with that said, I'll, unless there is any other comments to the contrary, what I've shared, I can take this information back, grab some additional information, and try to educate the board to the best of my ability at this point. Any further comments? Mr. Winters?
Yeah, I think I understand there's some confusion, but it's, the discussion that we had at the finance committee was about, you know, the requirements are going to be there no matter what we decide to do with the high school. Be it 100 million, 200 million, 70 million, there's, there is going to be the need for taking on debt, right? So I believe the discussion we had about the new money was around, originally was probably around the 10 million, but the aspect of 15 million and asking PFM to come back with a recommendation. I understand that if you want to specifically say that $15 million is going to be spent on asphalt, or that's going to be spent on-- or that's going to be spent on it, that is not necessarily the case at this point. It's about being able to borrow the money when you can and then using that money for the purposes that we need, that we know that we need no matter what we decide to do with the high school. I don't know if that helps. If you feel more comfortable voting because you don't know if it's going to be asphalt or HVAC or whatever, I understand.
Just to respond, no, it wasn't. I don't think it was that. It was, I'm seeing the master plan and the administration is saying, I was hearing in that presentation that it's for those projects and other projects that apparently were discussed in property last week, not necessarily what you've just said. I mean, that makes sense to me. I understand that even if we don't build a new high school and we're going to renovate the high school, I understand that the HVAC system is going to cost more than we have in the capital reserves. I get that. So that therein lies part of the confusion about this whole presentation. I just want to know really what the intent is. And if it's what you said, Paul, or Mr. Winters, it's different. But to me, that's different than what's in here. I think that pretty much sums up my confusion. Thank you. Thank you for that.
Ms. Kankrow?
No, I just echo what Mr. Winter says. I definitely understand. I agree. I don't think we should really be placing this on here, the master plan roadmap, because we didn't identify specific projects we were going to utilize it for. It's exactly that same concept. We're going to be putting either it's 100,000 dollars for renovations or we're doing the 200. So either way, we should really be very thoughtful about it right now with the market and with the recommendations of PFM. So I do agree we move forward with it.
Any other comments? Question, Ms. Austin?
Yeah, just I remember in the finance committee meeting that there were clear advantages that PFM told us about, which I don't have my notes in front of me, so the specifics are escaping me right now. But, you know, to share those also, you know, and also, you know, this is 15 million in front of us. And I think 10 million would be bank qualified. There was just a lot of iterations of possibilities with that, with this money that, and advantages of placing this now in this calendar year that I think those points are not coming through in this presentation.
Ms. Perdue?
I was a bit, I mean, I was saying here, so I'm glad the point was raised just because I think those that sit on the finance and property, I was expecting that they were following along with this. I think for me, having this sliding here, I think the purpose is fine what is stated, but having this sliding here where it's highlighting what's supposed to be the master plan with items on it, I think that's where some of the confusion is. I think it may be more helpful if we had some of the information that was provided at the finance meeting in reference to why it's ideal for us to do this now may be helpful. Looking at this presentation itself, I don't, I don't really know. I'm not comfortable with moving forward with this. I don't know what your plan is and I don't know what the timeline is to do this. But it seemed like we don't have the full information that's given us that, providing us the advantage of doing this now. So I guess my question is, considering the, I mean, most of us are saying we need more information and there seems to be more information that we don't have here. If we're not able, because this is currently on here for the bond resolution, what is the path forward? Is there something that will be provided to us that will help clarify that? Or is this bond resolution still staying on here and the board is going to have to make a recommendation of yes or no? Thank you.
So Ms. Perdue, I would say the recommendation here, at least from the finance, was to proceed with the resolution for them authorizing. So it'll be something that we would vote on in October. If we do not start that process here in September, then, and we decided to wait October for that authorization, there is probably not enough time for PFM to execute the borrowing in this calendar year. So that is the window from that perspective of why it's here is to give them time to do that. Sorry.
And if I, so.
And I'll just add, sorry, Ms. Austin. We do have PFM coming to talk about the financing of the new high school and/or, or whatever is in between. That is part of why PFM would be coming back next week.
Yeah, that's what I remember was the intention from the finance committee meeting is that PFM was going to be here. We then suggested to introduce the concept at the work session so that we could have these discussions. And then PFM is going to be here next week to clarify all the points and answer any further outstanding questions. But we did want to start this at the work session, maybe with mixed success here, to at least get the ball rolling on this discussion.
So my plan of action forward is to gather any additional information I can to provide for you, but recognizing that PFM will be here next week and can answer any of those additional questions beyond what I provide. We'll keep it on the agenda. And, you know, certainly if we're not prepared to vote on the matter, we certainly can table the matter for future determination. But I want to make sure that, you know, it's clear that, you know, what Mr. Winters has shared as chairman of the finance committee in terms of preparing us to move forward, it will be also, you know, a potential for us to consider a future that is going to require even additional borrowing beyond the 15 million to address the high school or to address any of these other, you know, capital needs within the district. So I do believe now is the best time to move forward with the matter. Other questions, comments? Yep, Ms. Graff?
So when PFM presented at the finance, we had a lot of feedback for them. Can we just make sure that their presentation next week addresses that feedback that we had given them about? Some of it was to simplify some of the information so it's easier for the board to be able to understand what they're telling us. The other thing is for them to be able to convey to us the benefit of borrowing 15 million now versus later, because I don't think that's been clearly conveyed here today. And we also in finance talked about the differential between 10 and 15 million. And I'm not sure I understand why we would do 15 instead of 10. And so I just, those are the three things that come to mind for me that I think would be really helpful for next week.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we can move on with the rest of the agenda?
Dr. Zerby, just real quick. I would say, though, the information that Dr. Zerby provides, please look at beforehand because if you think you're going to be able to understand it at the school board meeting completely, you know, reach back to Dr. Zerby. You can reach back to me, ask your questions at PFM. But if you're looking at it at the first time next Tuesday, you're not going to feel comfortable because you're not going to be able to absorb it all.
Moving on with the agenda, we'll have recognition of scheduled speakers with the Emma Wars, Board Honor Roll, and the new high school financing strategy. And then a follow-up on the facilities plan financing. We'll have reports from the committees. We'll also be adding under 6K as part of the regular committee, the right-to-know report that we will be providing on a regular basis. Obviously, due time for public comment. Appointment of school board representative, student representatives will occur. And then we'll have fiscal items. Are there any questions from members of the board on the list of bills, the treasurer's report of budgetary transfers and/or the bond resolution that we just previously spoke about? Any questions from members to my right? Questions, members to my left, seeing none. Move on to personnel items. Dr. Sergini?
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. For the consideration of the board this month, the personnel items are as follows. One resignation professional, Sarah Wright, special education instructor at Warsester. We thank Sarah for her 15 years of dedicated service to the students of Methacton, and we wish her well. Three resignations classified, Kristen Schoolly, power professional at Arcola, and Molly Ashcraft, bus assistant at Transportation. We thank Kristen and Molly for their service to the students of Methacton, and we wish them well. And Gregory McCurdy, utility grounds person at Facilities, resignation for retirement. Greg has provided dedicated service to Methacton School District for the past 24 years. His superior professional knowledge, especially in relation to the ongoing upkeep and maintenance of our grounds equipment has made Greg an invaluable asset to our district. Through all kinds of weather and conditions, Greg has worked to keep our schools and campuses in the best shape for our students and staff, including keeping all of us safe during inclement weather situations. We're grateful to Greg for all he's done for Methacton and his Methacton family wishes him the best in retirement. We have the establishment of one position classified, transportation coordinator. This position includes components of the position of transportation specialist with augmentations and additions, including supervision responsibilities. Along with this is the creation of the associated job description for the transportation coordinator position. There is one employment professional, Daniel Nob, health and physical education instructor at Arcola. We welcome Daniel to the Methacton family. Two employments classified, both power professionals, Rebecca Elliott at Warsester and Jennifer McGregor at Arrowhead, rather. We welcome Rebecca and Jennifer to the Methacton family. There's one change of status classified, Karen Mossip, from the transportation specialist position to the transportation coordinator position. And we thank Karen for taking on this new role. There are two sabbatical leaves, both for compensated professional development and both for the second semester of the 24-25 school year. Stephanie Marino, English instructor at the high school, and Margaret Bondur, instructional intervention specialist at Skyview. Supplemental contracts for student support services, IEP writing, additional club sponsors, instructional software support specialists, winter coaches, homecoming chaperones, curriculum and program coordinators, and activity sponsors, all is attached. The elimination of one position classified, the transportation specialist position commensurate with adding the transportation coordinator position, and one community education employment Caroline McCabe, swim instructor. We thank Caroline for taking on this new role. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sergini. Any questions from members to my left? Ms. Kankrow?
Can you provide, Sarah Wright is a phenomenal special ed teacher. Can you provide any insight on that resignation?
I can, other than to say I concur with what you said and she will certainly be missed.
Any other questions or comments for Dr. Sergini to my left? Ms. Thiel?
Yes, hi. Can you just provide some more information on the transportation, on the change of the transportation position to, from specialist to coordinator along with the change in compensation?
Certainly. The current position, the specialist position, is a member of our MESA support group organization. That position would be eliminated with the creation of a position in the confidential exempt group based on the elevation of the responsibilities, especially supervision, augmenting and increasing the level of responsibilities. There are certain responsibilities for transportation that were previously held by Mr. Bricker, our former director of business services. In his absence, Karen Mossip is best situated to do those and that would be a role in the confidential exempt group.
Can you just explain the, like, there's just some language there that I just don't follow? Like, I do, like, teacher principal admit, like, but like confidential exempt, like, where do, how does that frame?
The confidential exempt group, generally they are exempt from overtime and they function in a different capacity. They are able to do supervisory roles. It's quasi-administrative without being part of Act 93. So that's not a role that could be taken on by somebody in the MESA support group, including supervision of bus assistance at the transportation center.
Thank you.
Ms. Austin?
Yeah, I noticed that part of the responsibilities in the job description has to do with, I guess, student discipline or working with principals on student discipline matters. So is that, I guess my one question, is that one of the reasons why it's confidential? And then my other question is, what role does someone in transportation, just out of general curiosity, have with regards to student discipline or interacting with discipline matters and administration?
Certainly. It's not that that makes it confidential. The position is actually not confidential. The group is confidential. It encapsulates all of our employees who are either exempt, who are primarily employees in our technology department. Confidentialists are individuals, a small group of individuals who have access to negotiation items during that process. There are actually only four of them in the district. The role of the transportation coordinator with discipline would be to not actually dispense the discipline, but to work with building administration to do that.
Okay, so would that be more, I'm just curious, would that be more like record-keeping of bus videos and that sort of tasks?
Correct, providing the logistical information to the building administrators and serving as the liaison with the drivers and the remainder of the transportation department.
Any other questions to my left? Seeing none. To my right, Ms. Clary?
Dr. Sergini, sorry to beat up on you on the transportation position because I have questions about that too. But I'm curious, I'm trying to, and I think Ms. Thiel was trying to get, was sort of going down this path. The compensation change versus the job change, what new responsibilities is, I don't know how to pronounce her last name, Mossip? Is Ms. Mossip taking on that warrants? It's an additional $35,000 jump in her salary when you think of base salary plus PISA. So I'm trying to get to, what else is she doing?
In addition to supervision, a lot of it is the work that extends well beyond a standard 40-hour work week. Like an administrator or somebody in the exempt group, the level of responsibility to serve as a true liaison between the district and first student requires an excessive amount of hours and a certain gravitas of responsibility associated with the person or with the position, rather. So taking on those roles, working those extended hours and being fully responsible for the functionality of the liaison position between first student and Methacton is something that this, the coordinator role would take on in a way that the specialist position does not.
So Mr. Bricker was formerly the liaison between, like, who was doing it previously? Mr. Bricker?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, Ms. Kankrow?
We reviewed the job description to Ms. Clary at Property this past one. And there definitely was an extensive additional job responsibilities listed in there. So we went through each one of them pretty thoroughly at our meeting. And I definitely feel that we questioned about the 30,000 differential. But it does feel like she is taking on not just a process person, but now she's now this administrator supervisor covering all the areas of transportation. So that's why we felt we could move it forward.
Any other questions? Anybody to my left or my right? Ms. Graff?
Yeah, just to clarify, this may have been my misunderstanding. I was under the impression that her salary was, I think, the 65-plus. She got overtime. So I was under the impression that it was much closer to what the salary we were offering her. I do have some concerns that the two answers that were to the question of what are the additional tasks, supervisor and spending additional time? So in her previous role, the additional time was paid as overtime. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And so supervisor of how many individuals?
Approximately 11 district employees.
So who was managing those 11 employees previously?
It was a combined effort primarily led by the business department, business director.
So the business director was managing all of those 11? And now they're going to go report to this new position? I think that the job description is very, very lengthy. So it does cover a lot of stuff. I just, I want to be clear that the board needs to understand that if we're going to take somebody from an hourly employee and make them a salaried employee, which is what we're talking about when we go from, to an exempt role, you're essentially a salaried employee. I want to just make sure that we understand that she's no longer going to get paid any overtime. So we're giving her a bump in salary to compensate for that. But her previous salary plus her overtime was still less than what we're offering. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the personnel matters? Seeing none, we'll move on to curriculum and programs. There are no matters for your consideration next week. And then policy, Dr. Regina?
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. There's a number of items here for first read for the board's review. We're going to talk about a couple of them specifically. We'll start with 200, which is enrollment in the district. The specific change to this one is the proof of residency. The specific change to this one is the proof of residency specifically will now be requiring two different forms, as listed provided below in the policy. And so originally, it was one form. It will now be two forms. So that is the major change in the enrollment policy, 200. The other ones that you're probably drawing your attention to is 103A and 104A. So we typically do not see letters associated with the numbers in policy. This is kind of a new thing for us. So, and really what it is, it's, it's showing two different versions of policy, 103 and 104. And this is done because certain schools have been listed in an injunction that indicates that some of our schools have to follow the 2020 Title IX policy, while other schools have to follow the 2024 policy. And these changes in Pennsylvania are concerning really the process that we follow with Title IX, not the protections in which fall within the Title IX policy and that with regards to students and staff. And that is the complete report for our policies this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Regina. Any questions for Dr. Regina to my left? Seeing none to my right? Ms. Clary?
Thank you, Dr. Regina. Can we, can you give the board a little bit more background, though, about policy 103A and policy 104A and, and, you know, what schools they apply to, what don't? But you, what you specifically said was the protections, you know, aren't changing. And I would like, if you don't mind, explaining that so the board understands what we're talking about.
Sure, sure. And thank you. Ms. Austin brought to my attention, 104 should say similar to 103, discrimination, not dissemination. And so we will make that correction in the board agenda next week. So Ms. Clary's question, giving a little bit more detail around the Title IX recommendation. So really, what, where we are with, with the entire matter of a federal court in Kansas enjoying the U.S. Department of Education's enforcement of the 2024 Title IX regulations in certain states, Alaska, Kansas, Utah, and Wyoming, and in any schools attended by members of the plaintiff groups or their children anywhere in our country. And these schools are identified by a list provided to the courts. There's been three separate lists that have been provided to the courts on this matter. And five of our schools have been identified on this said list. Those five schools are our high school, Eagleville, Skyview, Warrsester, and Arrowhead. The two schools that have not been listed, excuse me, Woodland, Arrowhead and Arcola were the two that were not. I apologize. Thank you. What, what does that mean? It means that the five schools that I stated will have to follow the 2020 Title IX regulations. And the two schools, Arrowhead and Arcola, will be following the 2024 regulations. So what's the difference in those two policies specifically? One is the process. Really, the, the process that we follow from start of receiving a claim through the investigation phase and through the decision-making phase is different in those two policies. Some things not drastically different, and, and some things are, but it's really process-related. The other one is the definition of what we consider on the, on the basis of sex and how we define that in the new policy versus the old policy. With that being said, in February 2023, the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission issued an expanded definition in Pennsylvania on the basis of sex to include the additional references that are made in the 2024 regulations. That means that Pennsylvania, since February of 2023, has already been following the definition on the basis of sex that's in the new Title IX regulations. What does this mean for Methacton and for other schools in the Commonwealth? For those schools listed in the injunction, we will follow the 2020 process. For those schools not listed in the injunction, we will follow the 2024 process. But for all schools, students and staff alike, the same protections will be afforded to all people using the expanded definitions as defined by the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission on February of 2023. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Any other comments, Ms. Perdue?
It's unfortunate, because I think this is a lot to maintain and track. How will you get notified? Because I hear this is, things can change. Schools can move off the new regulation back to the old regulation. So how are you getting notified of this? How soon are you getting notified? And then what notification do you provide to staff?
Great question. Unfortunately, we actually, the moment a new list has come out, so there's been the original list and then two supplemental lists, we receive it from multiple solicitors. So they're, they're sharing it with all schools in the Commonwealth. The IU shares it out. We're, we seem to be getting it the moment it's released. And then Dr. Zerby, Dr. Sergini, and I are reviewing it to make sure any of our schools are falling on that list. As you can imagine, the entire IU schools are flowing in and off of that list, and, and it's based on school, not school district, as, which complicates things even further. As you can imagine, having two individuals from two different schools and applying the practice differently is a level of complexity that we hope we don't have to get into. But if we do, we will certainly follow the process, and it's nice to know that all the protections remain the same. So that, that makes it very, very easy for us to be consistent. Thank you.
Any other questions on policy? Seeing none. Then we would move on into the agenda to matters under other. Do you see that there's gifts and donations for the backpack donation received and a generous gift individual is noted in the amount of $46.96? And then second one approved a gift for an air hockey table from Lauren Bigler, valued for the SOAR program at $750. We also have transportation approve the following drivers, and then the contract agreement approved, contract agreement terms for services with central behavioral health for the 2425 school year, and then student settlement agreements as listed in items one and two below. Also note that dates for board members' calendars, September 29th, it's actually, should be the 24th, we'll make that corrections. But are there any questions on items under other? Ms. Clary?
So I have a request for more information on the contract agreement under 14D, the central behavioral health contract. I took a look at that, read through it. There's a total listed of $578,890, but I don't really know what it's for. I see above the scope of service, you know, it's seven therapists. So I sort of was doing the math, seven divided by the, I'm trying to, I just want to understand what the, what the amount is for. The contract also talks about that services requested outside of the scope will require additional funding. So I'm, I'm wondering or concerned, does, do the folks, and maybe this is a question for Dr. Graveney, but are we expecting to have services outside of the scope? If so, do we have an approximation of sort of how much? Yeah, I think that, and, and, yeah, I think that does it. Well, maybe also, if the, if we do need, the contract doesn't specify if we need services outside of the scope, do they have to come to us first for written approval? Like, the contract doesn't say anything about that. So I'm curious, can they just rack it up and then bill us? Or do they have to seek our approval, kind of thing?
I have all three of those questions. We'll include that in the memo this Friday for an update for the full board. Thank you. Any other questions on any matter under other? Ms. Cancro?
No. I just wanted to clarify. I thought the central behavior is the reach program that's K through 12 grade. So just wanted to.
Any other questions, Ms. Austin?
Just wondering what school is getting the air hockey table?
I'm sorry, Skyview.
Okay, can we include that?
Sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions under other? Seeing none. Let's turn now to Madam President.
Okay, we have old business and new business. Anything? Yes, Ms. Perdue?
I just wanted to ask about transportation. I know we, we talked about it a little bit, but I wanted to know how we're doing so far in reference to drivers and also, like, I guess, the schedule, like, you know, usually we hear a lot about, you know, there's issues with scheduling, the pickup, the drop-off delays. I know we have some road work that's causing some of the delays. I know a communication went out to the parents. I thought that was much needed. So it's helpful, but I'm just wondering, how are we looking so far in reference to drivers and delays and the schedule? Thank you.
So, so we're currently at six drivers short in terms of what we'd like to be at. We also know that there's a number of road closures, and Dr. Sergini, you might be able to, you know, fill in on some details, but that, before, before we get to that, know that there, there are a number of actions that the transportation department and primarily Karen Mossip has done to help alleviate some of those, those challenges. But certainly, we anticipate having those challenges through another three or four weeks. And Dr. Sergini, you might want to just give some more detailed reference to that.
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. We have experienced issues primarily in the Warrsester area on 73, first because of construction on one side of 363 down by Wentz Church Road, and that caused issues for any of the bus routes that were in that area. And then on the other side of 363 for gas main work, that's going to last approximately two more weeks, from what we know. And then in conversation with Ms. Mossip in transportation, all but one route was below the 50 minutes timeframe for students on the bus. She did work to make corrections, and that communication was sent out to families. And now anything that is beyond the 50 minutes is circumstantial based on traffic issues, not based on the route itself.
And so first student has been working, you, you probably start seeing more signs for looking for drivers and things of that nature. So there are, I believe, four individuals in the works as, in the process of getting their CDL. But, but in our, in our overall process, we're, we're trying to bring in more individuals to start them on the van, the van routes, and then to migrate them through the testing process into a CDL. So I really think that, you know, while we've had some challenges, and certainly at the beginning of every school year, we, you know, we have adjustments. We're still in the process of making adjustments, but I think overall, we, we've had a great start. I, I, hats off to our drivers, and certainly, we're going to show that in our appreciation tomorrow morning. We do have a driver appreciation that starts about 8:30. So any member of the board willing, able to fit that into your schedule, you can certainly join us down at the transportation garage. So we do give recognition for all the hard work, work that they're doing for, for us. Are there any other questions on matters under, I'm sorry, under all the new business?
Any other matters under all their new business? All right, seeing none, we're going to move to courtesy of the floor. The Board of Director, Board of School Directors will now provide an opportunity for residents to make comment on matters that are or may be before the board. The board asks that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. The Board of School Directors may choose to respond to matters following the conclusion of the comments, and you could also submit questions via email at information@methacton.org.
Jim Malick, Warrsester. Regarding your bond and your bond presentation, what's the rush? What's the rush? I know Mr. Winters, the head of finance, let this all go till the last minutes. You only have this tiny window. But I don't get the rush. Interest rates are going to come down. They're going to probably lower them this month. So is inflation. So your borrowing costs are going to be a lot less. So what's the rush to do it now? You can do it next year. Which leads me to, you know, Jen, what's the why for this project? You know, you were saying the educational piece? It's not. It's debt. Okay? It's debt, and you need to incur debt because most of your debt is going to be gone in 2029. So the impetus for this whole thing is debt, and the debt is on the clock. That's why the rush. That's why the compressed timeline. We heard the $100 million borrowing, or actually hear the $15 million borrowing is based on the master plan. Oh, Dave, I checked the website a couple days ago and sent you the master plan. It was fidavious. You just put up KCBA's master plan in the last day or two on the website. So which, which one of those are we using? If you're using KCBA's, you're in the process of hiring Mr. Bryce because you don't trust your master plan. How does that work? You don't trust your plan. You want somebody else, Mr. Bryce, to go ahead and do the plan again. What items on that master plan do you intend to finance? Because if you look at the renovation of the school, it's over $100 million, right? So are you borrowing that $10 million for the $100 million? I, I don't get what you're doing. They already said the vestibule project at Warrsester is not going to fly. So what you're doing makes no, actually, Dave, you scare me a little bit. And I don't get scared easy, but what's going on here is pretty scary. Mr. Regina, and, and your talk on the educational piece, Che, you forgot, you forgot a piece. You forgot the $450 million for, you know, a bookstore, a safe room or whatever? You can do that without building a new school. My other question is, of, of all the people you invited here, they're all self-interested people who are going to benefit from the project. Did any of them say, no, they don't want a new high school? The answer is, they all want a new high school. It's like this, hey, would you prefer a new high school? Absolutely. But somebody's got to pay for it. That's the problem.
Thank you.
Good evening. John Andrews, Lower Providence. I have some thoughts about the PATH FORWARD vote. Today, we're just weeks away from it. Schrader was tasked to develop options for new high school. They have struggled, and then last month presented their output. Expensive at over $200 million, yet to be costed are four deducts and eight adds. Its cost is close to the debt limit, and Methacton still has other needs that deserve debt fixtures on schedule. Its 4% tax increases are likely to exceed the 3% annual index limits in at least three years. Its capacity is small versus 1645 versus existing 2100-plus. It can't all fit in the buildable, buildable area as at least wrestling space would be in a separate fieldhouse. The steep slope locale adds stairs to the hindrances of ADA law appliance. There is possibility of fewer classrooms to save cost and raise efficiency, but at what educational cost? On the heat map, I am certain disturbance deserves a red mark. Also, a line item for, for affordability is missing, and I give it another red mark. Summing up, I say they tried and failed while we lost six months of renovation planning. In contrast, renovation looks more attractive. HBA sic, HVAC fix, fixable pool, now that the leak has stopped. Overhaul the auditorium for 800 to 900 capacity, some new classrooms, better technology, and evaluate a second floor corridor add. Move the Farina activity to idle land at Eagleville. Eliminate the sewer plant and use the Lower Providence Sewer Authority and add parking and improve corroboration with the community, not just students. Vote no on this new PATH FORWARD event. Now, as a separate item, I've mentioned at committee this week that possibly that a pool could be put up at the Audubon site, which would be across the street from where Lower Providence earlier had its own pool.
Thank you.
Again, you're interested in time clock. You should be at a You should be at a higher level, and I object, and object, and object to the three-minute limit. You hurt the district.
Good evening. I'm Suzanne Andrews. I've tried to stay out of this. I've tried to stay out of all of these things for years because I've been there and done that in a previous existence. But I do feel that I need to make a couple of comments because I know that, just like all of us who are property owners, school districts need to maintain and modernize its buildings periodically. And so now you're looking at the high school. Two years ago, the HVAC needed serious attention, and the superintendent suggested to the board at that time that they pause and look at renovation versus construction of a new building. Committees formed and reported, consultants studied and reported, architects studied and submitted options. The bottom line is that a new building and campus plan will impose a $200 million-plus tax burden for construction of a smaller, three-story building on a difficult site that has a plan full of challenges. You know what those challenges are if you've been listening for the past year or two. And the architect admits that the building probably will be good for 30 years, not 50. And this leaves very little funding for future maintenance and modernization of other properties in the district. No one knows what public education will require 30 or 50 years from now. The time for study is over, and the results are clear. You have the information, and you have the power and responsibility to say no to a $200 million boondoggle. Renovate the perfectly adequate existing building. Don't pave over this site and make it a parking lot.
Thank you.
Good evening. Michael Ryan, Lower Providence. First, I just want to say thank you to the board for all that you do for the district. It is greatly appreciated. Changing topics for the evening, I wanted to talk about two different things. The first is a new flyer or poster that you're going to see on the walls in the high school and maybe some of the other buildings called Be Heard, Be Safe, Report With Confidence. This is in regards to the Safe to Say program and Title IX. Several community members have been after this for a long time to make it easier for students to snap a little picture, report the things that are happening. Things that are covered under this are child abuse and bullying, racial bias and discrimination, sexual assault or sexual harassment, intimidation, retaliation, and several other things. So I just want to say, continue to talk about this. Please continue to educate the students. Many of the students do not necessarily understand, you know, how to go about this, what will happen if I do this. So I think education, I know some stuff is going out to parents, but please educate the students. They're the ones that we're trying to reach with this, and I would really appreciate if you just keep pushing that message out. The second thing is, I just want to report something that I think is awesome. It's probably a pretty small thing, but you don't always hear good things up here, so I figured I'd share a good story. My son, first grade kindergarten, or first grade at Woodland with Mrs. Brower. Everybody gets a take-home packet at the end of the night, right? With all the flyers and different things that are in there and the things to expect for the year. One caught my eye, and I just wanted to share it because I think this really represents the spirit of Methactin. And I've heard about things like this before, but I just want to share. So I'm going to read. It's entitled Handle With Care. If your family is experiencing difficulties at home, I would like to provide additional support at school. I understand that you are not always able to share details, and that's okay. If your child is coming to school after a difficult night, morning, or weekend, please email me or send a message on ClassDojo that just says, handle with care. Nothing else will, nothing else will be said or asked. This will let me know that your child may need extra time, patience, or help during the day. I think that's pretty darn special. And I know that, you know, there's probably other teachers who do different things like this throughout the district, but I thought that this needed to be put out there. It's just, like I said, it's a great example of what Methactin is. We used to talk about Paul would frequently mention Mr. Winters. I'm sorry. The whole child concept, this matches that. This takes into account the educational aspect of it. But is a student going to learn if they're coming to school with mental stuff from home? There's something going on in the house? This is just a prime example of what our teachers are in Methactin. So thank you very much. Have a great day.
Thank you. With that, any additional comments from the board or questions? All right, with that, do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn. Motion. Motion.